Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for June 15th, 2021. I'm Carrie Martinek, the Planning Board Chair. Welcome back to everybody in person. It's been a long time since we've been in this room, so I appreciate everyone scrambling to make these last-minute accommodations to be in person and get us all back together for now. In light of that, I do not have to read the usual notice that I've been reading for the last year or so, so we don't have to sit through that. I also want to make one quick note on the agenda for this evening. The Board Discussion Regarding Design Review member Lisa Sali will not take place this evening due to a notification that we have to send out in advance that was not sent out in advance, so we will be putting that on the agenda at another time. So for anybody who is looking to participate in that, that will not occur this evening. With that, why don't we get started with the agenda? First on our agenda tonight, we have the Continued Public Hearing Definitive Subdivision Application for Zero Bartlett Street, MAP 51 Parcel 3 and MAP 66 Parcel 16 to construct a four-lot subdivision. And tonight here, we have Attorney Don Hughes. Is it just you tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay. We received a letter earlier today from MWRA. Is there anything you'd want to note or additional information?
With regard to the letter?
Yeah, or anything at all?
Well, I guess if I can back up for the benefit of the Board.
Sure.
We had completed with you the review of the technical components of the subdivision back in February. You know, February 16th minutes reflect that you received a report from the town engineer that the plan met the subdivision rules and regulations and no further comments from either him or from DPW. An issue arose in later February with regard to the requirement of whether the MWRA is the owner of the aqueduct to sign the application. There were letters exchanged. You received a letter from an attorney for the butters asserting it. We provided a detailed response as to on March 10th with regard to that. And shortly thereafter, we undertook, at your request, to see if we could have the MWRA execute Form C and/or some letter that would indicate their consent. We have tried to get that and have been unsuccessful. We advise that as a matter of policy, the MWRA does not involve itself in local permitting. Rather, it leaves that to local officials to do that. It has its own permitting through the 8M process that we talked about before and that you're familiar with and that we would proceed with at that time. So we do not have the Form C that you requested in that fashion. If I might, I think that should not lead to a denial of the plan for the following reasons. The plan does comply with the subdivision rules and regulations. You have that information from the town engineer and doesn't seem to be in question, and that's the purpose of your review. We have demonstrated to you that there is no question of the legal right to cross the aqueduct. We provided you a copy of the right of easement and the plan of easement by our letter of February 11. We have indicated to you the previously issued 8M permit for the driveway. That was part of the denied site plan approval. And we've given you, as I referred to, the March 10th letter that explains why the case law that talks about the need for ownership is in cases in which there's a dispute on ownership and which adverse consequences can occur. We demonstrated that the relationship between the 8M permit issued for the driveway shown on the site plan is essentially the same as the subdivision roadway. That was in a letter of March 11th in which Allen and Major did an overlay to show you the areas involved, and they are essentially the same, but for the requirements of sidewalks, which is in the subdivision requirements. We've proposed a condition of approval so there's no risk that we could start construction without the consent of MWRA. We drafted a specific condition that construction pursuant to the subdivision could not commence unless and until we provide this board and you had an opportunity to review an 8M permit that made specific reference to the subdivision as referred to in your decision. So in my mind, that gets to really the gravamen of where we end up after this evening, which is if you approve with that condition, I do not see it as a risk in any fashion that the owner, that technically the owner of the land, we'll call it, it's not technically the MWRA itself, it's technically the public of Massachusetts, hasn't signed because they will have signed and indicated their approval to you before construction starts. And that, with all due respect, I think is a better result than a denial based upon that very highly technical issue on a plan that meets the subdivision rules and regulations, which will lead to inevitable further litigation, cost to the applicant, cost to the town, and undue need in this particular case.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any questions at this time from board members regarding the letter or anything that Attorney Don Hughes said?
If I'm clear, the letter is basically just an acknowledgement that they issued a permit previously. This is not a new, there's nothing new on it. It's just that they acknowledged that they issued a permit previously from the July 2020. Okay.
As I indicated, as a matter of policy, that the agency does not weigh in on applications pending. They will report on permits previously issued.
Okay. So along those lines, this is a letter that's for, the 8M is for the warehouse that we previously denied. This is that permit?
Right.
Okay. Other questions on that from anyone?
No.
Okay. Let's see. One other thing I wanted to mention this evening. Oh, actually, so for board members, if, I'm not sure if everyone got a chance to check email, but Town Council said that it was okay to use our laptops as long as we're not communicating externally, that we're using it as like an electronic filing, so that we can open files and things like that. So I'm about to open my laptop for that purpose. I just wanted to note a few letters that came in today. It's a tough adjustment to come from home and have this at your fingertips. So just to acknowledge that we had two letters that came in today. One from Rachel Armstrong at 10 Hemlock Drive that wrote, that had some issues with not knowing a few things about the proposal, the application itself, some issues wondering about the traffic studies, the significant safety concerns in that area with traffic, not yet knowing from some of the traffic studies that are going on now, not having the results of them, and just being unsure of what to expect over there, and asked for, requested that we deny the approval until we have all the necessary information. We received one letter from John Wickstead at 2 Sterbrooke Lane that wanted to voice his opposition. His statements were that he thought that brought up the issue of ownership, that our zone, our regulations had the applicant must be owner, owners of all the land included in the proposed subdivision. We did not think that that was the case in this instance, that the subdivision was not in public interest and asked that, had pointed out some of our, the purpose and intent of some of our subdivision law and how we did not think. He had a question about public safety, truck traffic, traffic safety and convenience. The items in question were, that he noted was, unless in the opinion of the board, such subdivision meets the requirements of public safety, including reasonable precautions against possible natural disasters, traffic safety and convenience, et cetera. That was his concern there. And also a concern about the subdivision on the area of groundwater overlay district. Just thought it would increase the density of development in the industrial district in that area and not in the best interest of Northborough, or good for the health and welfare of Northborough inhabitants. I think that's all we received today. I didn't receive any additional letters, so just to acknowledge them. Additionally, I wanted to make sure we had, I think it was the last time we met, the board had requested that I share some of the references I made to my meeting with Town Council and to document that for the board. So I just wanted to submit that as part of the record. The notes, and I'll actually, I'll just read them because I'm not sure, I want to make sure that the applicant had a chance to hear them as well. I'm not sure if it was posted or not. But from my notes that I submitted to document that conversation, Town Council had stated that it was a fair question to ask for MWRA to provide something that acknowledges, our land is shown in the subdivision plan and that's okay with us. We need knowledge or some form of consent that MWRA's property is shown on the subdivision plan. It was fair for the board to have that information, whether conditionally or contingently, that the MWRA is in agreement that the subdivision may proceed with their land shown on it, as it is shown on it. Let's see. Since the subdivision road goes through MWRA property, meaning that the roadway necessarily implicates their property, there should be a basis for the planning board to know that there is assent to that. Let's see. Thought it was legitimate for us to pursue MWR consent. There has to be some form of communication to be provided to show that MWRA is aware of this plan and what is being proposed with respect to its property. But since the deed provided is from the 1800s, having some contemporaneous evidence that the property owner is aware of what's going on is reasonable to ask. Let's see. And just the, that the owner of record from Registry of Deeds for that piece of land, for the missing piece of the subdivision application, I just documented from the Worcester Registry of Deeds. I think that was it for my notes, and that was submitted to the board and read here. If we could please include that as part of the record. I think otherwise, are there any additional statements from, any new evidence or information from you other than the letter or?
Well, I guess I would only add that I don't disagree with Town Council's indication that we figure to get it, much as he indicates. There's two ways to get it. One's in advance and the other is conditionally. And what we've proposed is conditionally, in light of the policy that MWRA has, that they consider this meddling, for lack of a better term, in local affairs, that we would get it prior to any activity on the subdivision. That is consistent with the subdivision control law, which would indicate that you, your board doesn't have the authority to require us to get another adjoining permit before to approve the subdivision. You can condition it on that, but not necessarily require it. And you may recall our discussion regarding conservation in that regard in some fashion. It's analogous in that fashion, that we're agreeing that if, as and when the subdivision road is going to be constructed, we first have to get overt approval from MWRA of the specific plan that you were to adopt as part of your approval. So much like Town Council indicates, it's fair for you to ask for it. It's fairer for you to ask for it as a condition than to treat it as a ground to deny it.
Okay. I just want to put that into context. The statement was, conditionally in agreement that the subdivision may proceed with their land shown on it, as it's shown on it. So I guess it was in reference to that particular portion of it. I don't, I understand that to mean to write that as a condition, but more of a statement that we're aware of.
Okay, the conversation, that's what I heard.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from board members before I open up for public comments?
I would just request if your minutes from that conversation with Town Council are in there, that Kathy's and Town Council should be included because I think there's a misinterpretation.
What do you mean, what of theirs included?
Your, your minutes, your recap of that conversation with Town Council is different than Kathy's.
Kathy?
I don't.
So I think what we talked about was why we asked for your recap and Kathy's recap, because we wanted to make sure that you're both on the same page.
I don't think that's why it was framed, but I'm happy to, Kathy, if you disagree with what I recorded from that meeting, then you should say so.
So she can actually go back and check, and if they're different, then she can make it part of the decision.
Okay. Is there something different that you heard, Kathy? I guess I'm not clear on that.
I don't have my, at least I don't think that they're in this file. My notes that we took, it was a Zoom meet? No, I think, was it a Zoom or a phone? I don't even remember. The, I mean, my recollection was such that, you know, the, that the, that the deed, you know, is, is proof that, you know, the MWRA owns the property and has owned it for, you know, multiple years. I mean, I think that deed goes back to the 1800s, if that. I'm trying to recall what.
I mean, do you have written notes that you'd like to submit?
I mean, I always take notes. I mean, in every meeting I'm at, but I just, I don't have them here. So I'm just at a loss to say what was exactly in my notes, but I'm trying.
Do any other board members think that we have additional notes to include, or I guess I don't know what other notes there would be.
Right. I'm just confused because I don't remember.
I'm just pointing out that you had a private meeting with Kathy Jubert and legal counsel. And when we asked for it, I think there was some discussion about whether everybody was on the same page. So I think if your interpretation's going to be part of the decision, so shouldn't legal counsels and Kathy's.
So these are his exact statements that I wrote down on paper, and these are not my interpretations of his statements. These are exact transcriptions of his statements that I wrote down.
Well, then Kathy can check too.
Yeah, and this is what we went through the exercise of doing. So I submitted to all of you back in whatever month it was, and it was for your review, and there were no other comments or questions or anything like that. So I don't under, so I'm not clear on the exercise you think that should take place if it was already submitted to the board? Is there other written minutes? You're welcome to submit them, but I don't think they exist. So I'm wondering what.
I just have, I mean, I just have my notes from, from the discussion. Do you want those include? I mean, those can be put into the file.
I'm just trying to help you, like.
But you said, "I want my notes as part of the conversation to be part of the decision."
No, I said, "As a public record," just part of the public.
As part of the public record. And so if that's the case, since Kathy attended and legal counsel attended, then they should all have be part of the public record.
Okay, so we need to close the hearing tonight. So how do you think that could transpire? If we have a due date, so I don't, I'm not clear on how that could, if there's something else to submit readily available, I guess that's possible, but I don't think we could delay the hearing for that. So I don't know, any?
I agree that.
Well, I don't want the hearing to be delayed. I just feel like it was a meeting of three people, and the only thing that's been included as part of the public record was your interpretation of the minutes.
Again, it's not my interpretation. It's the written-down statements that were stated. So I'm just including it as part of the public record. Okay, so we have, oh, public comments. Are there any further board questions or comments? Okay. This is a public hearing, so if anyone has a public comment they'd like to make, you're welcome to comment. Yes, if you please state your name and address.
My name is Henry Squillante, 72 Crestwood Drive. Just a point of clarification. Did you get something written from our Town Council, or was this your notes and Kathy's notes? Did you get something in writing after you had your Zoom meeting from the Town Council?
No. So that's why the, when I brought the feedback back to the board, so as the chair, I can seek Town Council advice. So I went and I talked to the council and reported back to the board on the advice that was given to me. At the time, I think Michelle had requested written documentation of that advice. So I transcribed the notes that I had taken from that meeting, which consisted of statements from the meeting, and submitted them to the board. So because it only had the benefit of going to the board, I just wanted to make sure that the public also heard those notes as well. In some cases, we do have Town Council create a memo, and he'll send a memo. In other cases, he'll talk to Kathy on the phone, and Kathy will report information back to the board.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, if you just say your name and address.
Janine Callahan, 600 Lane. I don't need to waste everybody's time. I'm just going to, or would reiterate what Rachel Armstrong's letter said and Jack Wakestead's being part of that neighborhood. We've been doing this since July. You all know our feelings of the development in Zero Bartlett, our concerns, and, and the fact that we don't know who is moving in there. We don't understand. It's just a road, but that's just the beginning. You've heard us all talk about the safety, the 18-wheelers, the high school, the neighborhood, and how it's just not the neighborhood that we all moved into, the more warehouses that go into this side of town. So again, I don't want to waste everybody's time. I'm just reiterating what I've said since last July in the first meeting that had happened about Zero Bartlett, and, and I agree with everything that Rachel Armstrong and Jack Wakestead wrote in the letters that they sent to the board today. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening? Okay, so we'll close, with that, we'll close the public comments. Any, based on what you've heard from the public, any further board comments? Okay, any new evidence or information to be presented? No? Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing for the definitive subdivision for Zero Bartlett.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? And I'm going to do a roll call, but I'm mistaken. I guess I still do a roll call. I guess all in favor to close. So it was first and second and to close if you're in favor. All right, we'll get back to this. Okay, so there was a motion made and seconded to close the hearing. That was a unanimous vote to close, so the hearing is now closed. Why don't we start deliberation then at this point before we get into, and we also have one Lima Street deliberation, but why don't we take it in order and we'll just, while it's fresh in our heads, why don't we talk about the subdivision? Any initial thoughts or comments on the subdivision? And if you don't have subdivision rules and regs, I want to make sure we have those readily available.
If anyone needs a copy of that, I can have Michelle, the beauty of being in the building.
Oh, maybe.
She's still downstairs.
It won't be in there.
No, that's, that's the zoning bylaw. So you all want to, oh, actually, you know what? We do not have physical copies. It's just online. We don't have any.
Okay, so I have them pulled out. I'm going to pull up the criteria. We have it. Yes.
Which is the definitive plan approval?
Yes. I'm just scrolling through to find the right section. Here we go, criteria. Okay, so the, I'll, just so for the board's benefit, if you don't have the rules and regs in front of you, and for the benefit of the public as well. So the criteria for determination is completeness and technical accuracy of all submissions, determination that development at this location does not entail unwarranted hazard to safety, health, and convenience of future residents of the development or of others because of possible natural disasters, traffic hazard, or other environmental degradation, conformity with the design and construction standards of these regulations, determination based upon the environmental analysis where submitted, that the subdivision as designed will not cause substantial or irreversible damage to the environment. Actually, in this case, there were only four lots, and I believe that they were not required to submit environmental analysis. So I don't actually think that, that's the correct, they never, they did not have to submit that because of four lots. Conformity with all applicable zoning law, area requirement, and consistency with the purposes of the subdivision control law. So that is the criteria of which we will evaluate. Any additional thoughts or comments from board members? Okay, why don't we start with, obviously, one of our bigger issues that we've been talking about quite a bit for the last few months has been around the issue of ownership. So we've talked quite a bit about ownership in our definitions. I'll go back for that. We talked about an applicant must be the owner of all land included in the proposed subdivision. And then in our definitions, the owner is the owner of records shown by the Registry of Deeds. So as part of our discussions, as Attorney Don pointed out, we had quite a bit of discussion over what that actually entails and under what circumstance we felt that the applicant was the owner of all the land presented in the subdivision plan. Are there any thoughts on that component of it, since it's been such a big piece of what we discussed the last few meetings?
I, I think that getting the consent or the awareness from the owner is a critical piece of proceeding with a subdivision plan.
And I'd agree. I mean, it's one thing that we did, we closed the last meeting out and said that if we had that component with the name on the C application, that would be something that would allow us to move in a direction which we still don't have.
I agree. That's where we lost it.
Any other thoughts on that? I mean, my concern with the letter is that, well, my concern goes back to the very beginning, actually. When we, back in the preliminary, the 8M permit has always been a source of contention for the board. It was asked for it since July 8th of last year, I believe is when it was first filed. And part of the preliminary decision, the reason for denial included that 8M permit and lack of information pertaining to the roadway in terms of the impact statement. Over time, we consistently talked about that permit and whether or not the applicant was going to get the permit, not get the permit, whether they needed to. You know, I think back in the very, one of the very first hearings, oh, I'm sorry, so that was a preliminary, the definitive was issued 1217. On our hearing on January 19th, the applicant confirmed MWRA had not seen the subdivision plan, and they did not plan to obtain the permit. And that theme, that theme went through, was kind of part of every single hearing since, that there was that constant. Can we just show there's some sort of evidence there that their awareness is going on? This letter doesn't make it clear to me, they know they're, they're part of a subdivision application. It says that they, so on July tenth, twenty twenty, under section eight M of chapter three seventy-two of the acts of nineteen eighty-four, MWRA issued a permit to the Gutierrez Company in connection with work for the installation of an access drive in utilities at zero and three oh one Bartlett Street. So it's not even to this plan at all, it's to the previous.
Two plans ago.
Oh, it's two plans ago?
Well, it's not this one or the previous, first subdivision, it's two plans ago.
So not the, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Which is significantly different than what they want to do. This plan that we're looking at is significantly different than what this permit is for.
Just going through the history, it sounded like, you know, over and over again, there was an effort to, you know, we kept continuing because we thought we'd get additional information on it. And it just, I feel like there was ample notice and opportunity to even come back with the permit. I think it was stated at one of the previous meetings that they didn't want to do that because they wanted to, this was to hold out for the original plan that they had wanted. So this was a way to hold that, but not really necessarily wanting the subdivision, it sounded like. So they didn't, yeah. Sorry, go ahead, I don't want to.
Yeah, no, I, I felt that just in case the original plan didn't go through, this was a placeholder to get started to get the road in. You know, I'm, I'm a little concerned with giving the permission or, or accepting the application or approving it and then having the applicant go to the MWRA saying, well, the local town approved it and so therefore we think it has weight. And it's sort of putting the cart before the horse in that sense. You know, we're hearing that the MWRA doesn't want to meddle in our local regulations, but one of our local regulations is that we actually need permission from the MWRA to do this. So it's not meddling, it's clarification. I, I just sort of feel like this wasn't wholeheartedly approached as a plan.
One other, anything else to say on that from anyone's perspective?
It's just that we stated it needs to be a signature on the application.
Well, I think a couple of board members felt that maybe even some sort of acknowledgement. So I think some board members felt like I would want a signature. And some board members may have felt, I don't think it was a majority, but at least some felt, okay, well, at least some sort of acknowledgement would be sufficient. But I feel like in this case, we got neither one. We didn't get even an acknowledgement that it exists. We got verification that old permit exists, which is irrelevant to what this application is, in my mind. So I, we didn't come in, there's nothing in our hand. And I think the concern has always been, you know, if, if they haven't proven that they have the authority to undertake all of the, you know, improvements and maintenance showed in this plan, then what, how have we done our job to show that this is in the safety and best interest of the town when we don't even have anything to show us that they're able to execute on this plan, that they have the authority to execute on this plan? And that concerns me, that's always concerned me. And I, I feel like it was made clear and ample time was given to obtain that. There was another issue that the board brought up at one point that, that stemmed back to the preliminary plan and that was around the impact statements. There, I think that there was continuous requests to help us to navigate the impact statements because some talked about the old plan and some talked about the subdivision. And there was kind of a mixed match between what the impact report really covered for several board members. I don't know at the end if board members felt that way, any comments on that component of it?
Yeah, I don't think that ever got completely cleared up. Whether or not, when they're talking about what the impact would be was with parcel H or whether it not would be with the subdivision, it seemed to go back and forth. Depending on what they, what was desired for results.
Just no thoughts on that? Did you find, did you, were you clear on the impact or?
No, I'm not, I, I just, in general, I feel we're kind of, nothing's progressed further since the last time we, we met. And there's several criteria that, certainly the ownership being the most significant for me. But then not having an understanding of the impact of what could go there is, and then conditioning everything. I'd rather have this done up front, I guess, I'd feel more comfortable.
At one point, I think we asked for worst-case scenario, you could do the worst case on each of those lots to get an impact, but, but we were told this is only for a road, it's for no. But you know, it is definitely going to be built out, it's just not a road to nowhere.
Well, right, and I think that led to, there are a couple pieces, like the impact to, the, you know, there was ninety-nine, ninety-nine point three percent pervious cover, so there would be no impact. And there was no land erosion or no, you know, tree cover issues because they weren't, we're only looking at the roadway. But there's not going to be any noise because we're only looking at the roadway. But then we'd look, the traffic report was about the warehouse. The Mass Historical Commission letter was about the warehouse. The geotechnical report was about the warehouse. There was no evidence that, you know, helped us to understand, are we talking about the warehouse situation? Are we talking about the subdivision road situation? So if it's just a road, of course, there's no noise. But if it's a warehouse, as presented in the other reports, then there is noise. So which path do we, it was, it was always unclear, and I think we stated that since preliminary, that we had a lack of information that helped us understand the impact. And through, you know, looking back through the hearings and, you know, the notes through all the hearings, I, I feel like board members kept asking for that and it wasn't something that was necessarily ever corrected. And it seemed like, I think Melly used said, or I don't want to put it in everybody's mouth, that it was almost like a half, halfway effort to push this application forward with, you know, pulling different materials together from a previous application but not helping us see the picture of this particular application, which concerned me throughout. And I think was communicated pretty consistently throughout this process, that we needed help understanding the impact. You know, if it's on us to prove safety, you know, convenience and welfare of inhabitants, how do we do that? Without some sort of clear impact statement that's pretty consistent with what we're looking at? I thought that was hard to navigate. I think the board, this was an issue we decided would not really stand on its own. But also, obviously, the CONCON stuff was, the CONCON information was missing, I think. We talked a lot about that and just, I think we ultimately decided that didn't stand on its own, but it's just another piece of the puzzle that did not exist for the application. That I had in my notes is something that, you know, it was something, it sounded like the applicant didn't want to amend their notice because it was more difficult to keep their previous application open if they had to start a new one or amend it or it wasn't anybody's preference. So I think the last board meeting, I felt like I heard members saying, well, what about our board? You know, we need to see, like, why are we the ones that don't get to just say, well, it's inconvenient for us as well. So what about this board and getting the information we need? It's not, it was a message that I, that stood out to me. Any other thoughts? I mean, in terms of, I want to make sure we talk about criteria-wise.
Well, I just, I do want to reiterate something that was from town council, which is that the, we need something to show that the MWRA is aware of this plan, the subdivision plan, and what is being proposed with respect to this property. And he made it very clear in his statements that this was regard to the subdivision plan.
Right.
Specifically.
Yeah, I think that for the subdivision plan, if we are to look back again, I mean, we looked at our definitions of what that equates to. It's part of our subdivision rules and regs. It's also consistent with a mass general law of subdivision, that ownership is, owner agent, I think, is in the mass general law. You know, it's a part, it's a requirement as part of this, of our rules and regs, and for good reason. The owner of the site needs to be properly identified in the Form C. Even if you look at, you know, contents that should be part of the plan, we're missing the name and address of the record owner, of all the record owners. And again, who do we hold accountable if something goes wrong? How have we, who do we go to if there's something wrong? There's no real, we go, if something goes wrong, we go to the people on the Form C, we find out who the owners are. And here, not all the owners are listed. And I think even acknowledgement would be some comfort, but we don't even have the acknowledgement that this exists. So I would hate for our subdivision plan to be a surprise to the state.
Or for something not to work out right and then all of a sudden hear that, well, we really didn't approve this plan.
Right.
It's just.
I think what I heard, the message I consistently heard was that it was a reasonable request. Any sort of acknowledgement, ownership, letters were all reasonable requests. I think we made those requests, I think they weren't fulfilled. I think that makes this plan in general fatally deficient subdivision plan overall, not meeting the ownership requirements. I think there are some criteria issues as well. I want to pull those up again. So I think issues, the issues that we've discussed spans a few different criteria issues. And I'm, actually, I want to go down and, and just speak to them. So completeness and technical accuracy of all submissions. I, I think what the board is expressing here, that it's not complete, in fact, it is actually deficient, lacking ownership with the ownership piece. Technical accuracy, I think, you know, there are some. I think technically, so, you know, there, it was submitted, there were, it complied with certain requirements. But again, I don't think we got a complete picture, I don't think, I think the ownership on its face, it's a, it's a defective subdivision plan overall without meeting that ownership.
Carrie, can you just tell me what section you're in?
Oh, yes, ten twenty-eight zero one zero, criteria.
Just so, because our, you know, the board's recording secretary is just going to be watching this.
Oh, sure.
So I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, yes, okay, so let me, let me go back then, so.
No, that's okay, so you're in ten, you're in ten twenty.
Well, I want to make sure she's able to follow, I, I'm reluctant to think about that with the, I'm not sharing my screen anymore. I'm in, I'm referencing ownership, ten zero four zero three zero, the definitions of applicant and owner. I'm referencing. Well, I guess for not, in not, in not having the permits, it also touches upon, you know, failure to obtain all necessary permits, licenses, releases, or rights can constitute a reason for disapproval, that's applicant responses, ten twelve zero three zero. The impact reports are ten twelve zero six zero. The contents are ten twenty zero three zero. CONCON is ten twenty zero seven zero. I touched upon the purpose, which is ten zero four zero two zero. And then the criteria that I'm looking at is ten twenty-eight zero one zero.
Thank you.
Okay, now I have to find ten twenty zero one zero. Okay, let's see. Also determination and that development at this location does not entail unwarranted hazard to safety, health, and convenience of future residents of the development or of others because of possible natural disasters, traffic hazard, or other environmental degradation. It sounded like the board talked about, you know, not really getting a full picture of that through the impact statements. I think there's also, we talked about, you know, traffic in that area in general. I don't know if board members have any specific comments, I want to make sure to give you, anyone a chance to speak, who wants to speak on that at all?
I agree, like, even if you use the warehouse technical information for parcel H, there was also parcel B that could be developed on and we never got any information on any impact that that would cause. So like we just talked about. There could be unwarranted hazard to safety, health, convenience, but we weren't really given that information.
Obviously, they didn't submit any sort, they didn't have to submit the environmental analysis, but just in terms of any sort of, you know, environmental degradation. I don't think we got numbers that made it clear when they talked about land erosion or impact. You know, the numbers just weren't realistic because it didn't make sense. You know, if there's only ninety-nine point three percent pervious cover for subdivision of four lots, how can that be? It didn't make sense, it seemed unrealistic and, it didn't seem like it was substantiated information because part of the report did include property, at least a warehouse, a hundred and fifty thousand square foot warehouse. So those numbers didn't make sense to me in the traffic report. So it, it's difficult to make this determination from my perspective. I don't know if others had, have trouble making that determination. It sounds like it, based on the conversation.
Yeah, I would agree.
Conformity with the design and construction standards of these regulations. I didn't hear board concerns on this, if you want to vocalize anything, please do. I think.
I think if DPW and, and Town Engineer went through those, so if we're looking at just the road, I think he felt that those met the design and construction standards, so.
I would agree.
I think the road came on that one.
Okay, environmental analysis was not applicable here, there are only four lots. Five lots is the threshold for that. Conformity with applicable zoning law, area requirements. We talked about this a lot because, Amy, this was a point you brought up before, I don't know if you want to speak to it at all, but.
Right, there were two of them, so by making this subdivision, there would be two lots that would be non-conforming, so we're actually creating non-conforming lots. Where if they're not buildable anyways, we leave it as it is now, not a subdivision, you still have lot H, you still have lot B. I mean, as a town, I know we can't use that as the one criteria, but add it in with the others. By doing the subdivision, we're actually creating two extra non-conforming lots. Or non-buildable, one was non-buildable and one was non-conforming.
Oh, that's right, one was non-buildable.
Yeah.
Both were not.
Yep.
One was non-conforming, one was non-buildable?
Yep, we didn't have the proper lot size. And we could, standing alone on just that one criteria, we probably could have been, you know, written the statement that town council mentioned, but if you added in with everything else, it was just another criteria that wasn't met.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I want to go back to the ownership, I still think.
I still think that, I think the applicant has been working with the state on this, and clearly the applicant has said several times that it's the state's purview to come through and to make it a condition, the AIDM permit, as part of ownership. So I think with the argument that you're putting forward, it's weak because I think the state is saying that their preference is to make it a condition as part of the decision. So I don't agree with a lot of what you're saying as far as that because the applicant has already gone back to the state, is working with the state, and the state is saying, this is what we prefer, this is the method we prefer. And the board is saying, well, we don't like that. But the state is saying, but we prefer this route.
So are you, just to clarify, are you saying the old AIDM permit for the previous application is adequate?
I'm saying that the applicant is saying that make it a condition as part of the decision.
So in your, I just want to clarify, in your mind then, the AIDM permit is enough to equate to ownership in your...
That's what the state is saying. The state is saying that they prefer that route.
I didn't get that message.
Well, that's what they're saying as far as ownership, because you're questioning all the forms of ownership.
Okay. Okay, so Michelle feels differently on ownership.
I think it would have been helpful if we had maybe gotten a letter from the state saying they would prefer that, the route that Michelle was mentioning, where we put the application in and give it on terms of conditions. But I don't, I don't know that I ever got anything that said that. I got word from the attorney, but I don't know that I have ever seen.
Well, I think the attorney has been saying that all along, or saying it right now, that that's what the state would prefer, to make it a condition. I understand that you wanted to say it, "we prefer" in writing, but the applicant just said that tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah. I interpreted that, so a little differently, I interpreted that the applicant preferred to make it a condition, and the state preferred to not get involved. But there is no application for an AIDM or anything like that. This is all an old AIDM, not anything that... So even if they were saying conditionally, some sort of evidence of ownership, this still is about the old AIDM permit, right?
I understand that, but that's not what the applicant asked to tonight.
Okay. Okay.
According to our definition of applicant, the applicant or applicants must be the owner or owners of the land included in the proposed subdivision. There are three parts of the subdivision, and the owner of the middle would be the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so...
Okay. So it sounds like, Michelle, you don't agree on the ownership component of it. Any other thoughts on that one? Okay. And then consistency with the purposes of subdivision control law. All right, so the purpose is 10-04-020, for the purpose of the minutes. Okay, so I think we had read some of this before. If anybody wants me to read the purpose again, I will, for the benefit of, it's a Just because everybody doesn't have a copy, I want to make sure everyone understands what the purpose says. So it says, "These subdivision regulations have been enacted for the purpose of protecting the safety, convenience, and welfare of the inhabitants of the town by regulating the layout and construction of ways and subdivisions, providing access to the several lots therein, but which have not become public ways, and ensuring sanitary conditions in subdivisions, and in proper cases, parks and open areas. The powers of the planning board and of the Board of Appeals under these regulations shall be exercised with due regard for the provision of adequate access to all the lots in the subdivision by ways that will be safe and convenient for travel, for lessening congestion in such ways and in the adjacent public ways, for reducing danger to life and limb in the operation of motor vehicles, for securing safety in the case of fire, flood, panic, and other emergencies, for ensuring compliance with the applicable zoning bylaws, for securing adequate provision for water distribution, sewage, drainage, protection of natural water resources, flood control, wetlands, areas, and other requirements where necessary in a subdivision, for protecting, promoting, enhancing the natural beauty and amenities of the town, and for coordinating the ways in a subdivision with each other, with the public ways in the town, and with the ways in neighboring subdivisions." That's it. Any thoughts on that?
I think that would go back to the rules of the state where we didn't hear what was actually going to be on the subdivision. So how do you know that it meets the purpose, other than it's a road to nowhere?
Yeah, I think that was an issue. For me, I think if there is an issue of ownership, then, you know, if they haven't shown full authority to execute on the plan as presented, then none of these things can occur because we have no assurance that, you know, they actually have the ultimate authority on ensuring all of these things. So in my mind, almost every, I mean, again, I think if their ownership is an issue, this is fatally deficient, number one. But to, to be able to meet this purpose can't be under that. That's why I think the application itself is deficient, because it can't even meet the purpose without ensuring that, that full authority. You know, and I think we had talked about some of the impact, the issues proving impact and all of that. I think it makes it hard to, to, excuse me, show that the planning board is in compliance with, you know, have we made, did we make sure that this was in full compliance? And I think that was difficult for us to do with some of the impact, the issues we had with the impact statements, I think were troublesome. Any other comments on that? I just want to, I just want a minute to go through my notes here. I have a lot of notes. There's a lot to cover.
Mm-hmm.
I think we also had, in one of the memos, not related necessarily to that last piece of the criteria, I think in one of the memos that there was a request made, it was the waiver of ownership. So I think, to be sure, we may want to discuss that as a possibility, that waiver, how we feel about waiving ownership. I think it was a request in one of the memos that was sent to us. I think at our last hearing, we talked, oh, do you have a moment?
I would say it was from 3-10-21, based on the case of the request to memo, like, 3-11-10. I guess it were a condition, sorry. I don't have it in.
Is it the memo, Amy?
Millie, are you looking at the letter from Fletcher Tilton?
Yeah.
Date March 10.
Yep. I don't think it's in there, though. I can't remember if it's...
No, I think, let's see. I think it's from the March 15 memo.
Okay. Got one.
Okay. So without prejudice and without in any manner waiving the position enunciated by the applicant from the previous memo, they request that we waive any requirement that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the owner of the portion of land shown on the submitted subdivision plan is a right-of-way easement across the aqueduct. Let's see. So in further support of the quest, the request for a waiver, I would note that the waiver would be in the public interest so as to not deprive the private landlord of the ability to subdivide its land without that signature. And that such waiver would not be inconsistent with the intent and purpose of subdivision control law. So this was a request made. I just want to make sure we addressed, thanks, Amy. We just talked about that last time, and the board had indicated that they were not interested in a waiver. If that has changed, please speak and let me know if you've changed your mind on that. I think we had talked about that it was not in the interest of, it was not in public interest, public best interest, because the public is actually not protected if the board isn't able to ensure it received a properly executed covenant or subdivision or whatever the case. So that we did not feel as consistent with the intent and purpose of subdivision law at that time. Does anybody now feel differently about waiving ownership as a requirement?
I do not.
Okay, any other comments? I don't have the section handy on waivers, Kathy, for the minutes, for the purpose of minutes.
Oh, in the subdivision rules and regs?
Oh, waiver of compliance. I think that's the right section.
Yep, so that's on, it's just one sentence, it's on page 10-4.
Let me see. Okay, if there are any, if there are no further comments, then I will entertain a motion to deny the definitive subdivision application for Zero Bartlett Street, map 51, parcel 3, and map 66, parcel 16, to construct a four-lot subdivision for not meeting the, for first, being a fatally deficient subdivision application without showing ownership, without adequately showing ownership, and for not meeting the following criteria. One, completeness and technical accuracy of all subdivisions. Two, determination of development at this location does not entail unwarranted hazard to safety, health, and convenience of future residents of the development of others, excuse me, residents of the development or of others because of possible natural disasters, traffic hazard, or other environmental degradation. Five, conformity with all applicable zoning lot area requirements. Six, consistency with the purposes of the subdivision law, in context with the discussion that board members just had as part of deliberation.
Someone...
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote, and if you care to add anything specific to your reasons, you can. Otherwise, we will go by deliberation of the board and the reasons that were dislisted. So what we have on the table is we have a motion for denial.
So Amy made that motion? I'm sorry.
Well, Carrie made it, well...
Well, yes, Amy made it. I entertained the motion. Amy moved it.
Okay, so you made the motion, and the second was Anthony.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded for denial. So an aye is in favor of what's been put forward. And you can add additional information if you'd like with your vote. Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Michelle?
Nay.
Millie?
Aye.
Carrie's a aye. Okay. That concludes the definitive subdivision. Thank you. Okay, next we will move on to the One Limon Street decision deliberation. So this hearing has already closed. Tonight, we are just focused on deliberation for the plan. Okay, to reset, because now we're back in our bylaws, we are looking at One Limon Street, which was an application for a special permit for use and a site. So we, I think everybody has their bylaws book, so I don't need to read everything through this time. You should have it right in your books. Why don't we get started with general deliberation about One Limon Street? Any initial thoughts from the board?
Well, I felt that this applicant worked really hard with the design review and the planning board and all the boards. I feel that the use was approved through the ZBA, so our purview was to look at the site plan. And I felt like he really worked hard to agree to a lot of different conditions, and he took out a trucking bay, so there was one trucking bay allowed, and put in all sorts of landscaping. One question I did have when I reviewed the lighting plan is, it doesn't look like it has a signature from an engineer, and I had read that in one of the emails I read. So if, if the board decided to approve, I would like to put in a condition that it needs to be stamped and shown that there would be no spillover. Because there's a disclaimer, at least on the lighting plan I have, that said these drawings are for conceptual purposes only. And so I just wanted to make sure if there was approval, and I don't know what the other board members think, that the lighting plan was stamped. I have a lot of different conditions if we decide to approve it, but I guess I'd like to see what other people thought.
Okay, so did I have that correctly? Amy, could you repeat your proposed condition?
I have a lot.
Okay, for that one in particular?
Well, this one is a lighting plan, and the condition on the lighting plan with that would have to be stamped and approved, I guess maybe the town engineer, I wanted to ask Fred, but he's not here tonight, but before the building permit was allowed, the site, the lighting plan would have to be stamped and approved by either house or county staff. I'm not sure, Kathy.
We don't stamp the, I mean, even though Fred's a PE, he wouldn't stamp...
Right, but I think...
Anyone else's plans.
No, not him, but an engineer by the applicant.
The, I mean, there's the, as part of the submittal is the lighting plan.
Right.
And where, just where are you referencing, Amy? Is it in the subdivision rules and regs that the lighting plan has to be stamped by an engineer?
Well, it was a question I had for Fred, because I did read it.
Fred doesn't do anything with the lighting.
Oh, I know, not him.
No, no, I'm saying he doesn't do anything with the lighting plans.
Okay, it was a question I had.
That's, the design review committee goes through the lighting plans, and, and they were in agreement.
But I know with groundwater, like, all engineering plans are stamped, that they agree that it is what it says it is. And I read it in one of the memos, I'd have to go through all my paperwork, to say that the lighting plan wasn't stamped by an engineer.
Is your primary concern light spillover?
Yes.
So if not stamped, at least, like...
I thought you need an engineering stamp to actually say that.
We've never had an engineer stamp the lighting plan. They're, they're not prepared by engineers, they're usually prepared by, well, sometimes they will be done in-house, but a, but a PE wouldn't... they will be done in-house, but a, but a PE wouldn't, they have nothing to do with lighting, so they wouldn't stamp that plan. But there's usually a designer that puts together the, the plan, and, and on the plan, and if anyone is, has the plan in front of them, or you can show you the copy I have, you can see that there isn't any light spillover. There's zero along the entire border. And that's definitely one of the things that, you know, you look for, for the site plan approval, and, and one of the items that the design review committee looks for.
Okay, I just didn't know, because I had read it, I wish I had the memo.
Who's the memo from?
I don't know, that's why I said I don't have it, maybe I'll find it when other people are talking.
Okay. Other thoughts on this?
So I'll look forward, I'll look through that, but one of the other conditions I had, which probably would help with the lighting, is that we talked about hours, and hours of lights out. And I guess there was a discussion that the wall packs would have to stay on for minimum security lighting only, but the applicant was in agreement that we could have lights out of the pole lights. So I didn't know what others thought about that.
Wait, so, okay.
Sorry, but I thought that the landscape designer was concerned about plowing at night in the dark?
But then he said the wall lights would be enough.
Okay.
The wall packs.
Okay. So at a certain time, the light poles of the wall, the wall pack would stay on?
Right, that's what I thought we got to, as a point.
I did too.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, this is just right out of my notes, but this is from Mr. Varan, who originally said that he needed the lights on in the parking lot for snow removal, and then stated that the wall packs would be adequate.
Okay. So I think we would have to think-
And the, the light poles you had talked about at the last meeting, shutting off the light poles at 9:00 PM, and that the wall packs would remain on.
That's what I recall, too.
I mean, you didn't vote on anything, those are just, that was part of your discussion at the last meeting, on this June 1st.
Yep. One of the other, um, conditions I talked about was taking the line it off the parking spaces that were close to Lyman Street, just so the, the employees and others would park on the opposite side of the building, so not to bother the residents. And the applicant was okay with that. The paving would still be there, because they needed it for the water runoff, but they were okay not lining those parking spaces. I didn't know what other people knew of that.
Was that the first 10 spots, or do we have a number for that? Did you write down a number on that, Kathy?
I didn't write down a number, just Amy's comment about the lights.
Yeah, it was 16 there.
Through the first of the, yeah.
I mean, there have to be minimum 32 spaces. I have a plan.
So, Amy, are you talking, I mean, there's, there's 25 spaces on the easterly side of the property, and then on the southerly side, there's six, 18 spaces. So are you?
I think she's talking on the southerly side.
So how many spaces are you talking about?
Well, we have to have 32 spaces minimum, so, how many are on the plan right now? Forty-five or forty-seven?
Forty-five I have.
Uh, there's 45 on the plan.
Okay, so 13 would be all that we could take off. And I would take off the lines for the 13 that were closest to the neighbor.
Yeah, I thought we went back to, do you have your plan there?
Yep.
We went back to, like, a specific spot.
It has the parking spaces on it.
So Amy, you're looking at the, the first 13 spaces off of Lyman Street?
Yeah.
To not be striped?
Yeah, if you, it's...
I think it's 10 spaces, is it?
That's what I recall.
All right. Well, that's for, do you count that as well? Millie, did you see that? I was blocking.
I can see it.
Well, there are 16 going all the way to the dumpster.
And that give them the 32 they need?
Well, they can only take off 13, so if you take off the 13 that were closest to the neighbor, just not strike them. Just an idea, I wanted to, just to keep the cars away from the neighbors. Another one we had talked about was the landscaping, and Kathy, you had mentioned you might write a condition, because instead of plants in perpetuity, you had said there were some clauses that you had used before that were similar.
Yeah, you had asked me in an email, Amy, and I said I hadn't written this decision yet, so, but I mean, it, there's a pretty standard condition that, you know, the board has used in the, in the past about, you know, that the plantings, you know, shall be in perpetuity, I mean, you know, it's a little more involved in that, but, you know, that's a pretty standard condition that's been placed on the site plans. But can I just go back to the striping?
Sure.
So the, because I just want to word this correctly, are you, because then you said something about you don't want the cars to park there. So, just because there's not stripes doesn't mean cars won't park there. So are you looking for cars not to be parked there, or not for there to be stripes? Because it's two entirely different things.
Right, I just haven't looked through the board that.
Would you like the slanted, like the no parking slants on that?
I was just saying, there's only nine employees, and then he was talking about 20 employees max, so there should, and there's no sales on site, so the 25 spaces on the other side should be enough. I don't know if I would say no parking on that side, I just thought by taking off the lines, people wouldn't think to park there. I don't know what the board thinks about that. Do you want no parking on that side, or just take off the lines, so then?
Well, you have to have some parking in the back, because they have to meet, unless you want to waive their parking requirements.
Yep.
So how many spaces are in the back, 13?
No, according to the plan, there's 18.
So why don't you just take away 10 spaces? Leave eight in the back?
But what I'm saying, I just, I mean, it, it doesn't matter to me, I just want to be able to word this properly. Do you just not want it striped? That's fine, that's a condition. Or, then I heard you say you don't want people parking there. So whether it's striped or not, people may park there. So then you probably want signage put up that says, "Do not park there," or something to that effect. If that's, I, I don't know what you're going for. So if you're going for people not to park there, then, you know, that's a different condition.
So if you have 16 spaces along the back, you take 10 spaces, and the applicant certainly on the asphalt, put no parking, painted on the asphalt, and then stripe the other six, remaining six. I think that's fair and reasonable for the applicant?
I agree with that.
Yep.
Okay, so it's 10 spaces that you want taken out?
Except, I will point out that I think the applicant mentioned that they may need a truck to pull in there, so even if it says no parking, I think that means, like, literally parking a car there not for the day. Not like if a truck needs to use that space.
Right.
Okay.
Another one I thought we talked about was no outside storage of goods, since the truck bay was facing the residence, who didn't want piling of all sorts of things. It can happen over time. And I, he agreed. No outside storage of goods?
Yeah, I think as part of that, we talked about keeping that loading dock area clean, which maybe went hand in hand, so that, like, you can see the loading dock area from the street, it looks like, so just so it wasn't, didn't have, like, crates and stuff like that.
Didn't see that there was any type of dumpster on the site, was there?
There is, there's a dumpster at the corner.
And it has a natural screening around it.
Okay.
Well, it has a, it doesn't have a-
It's a fence around it.
Okay, great.
We might want to put that in the condition, unless it's on the site plan, that a lot of times we do put that the dumpster must be screened by fence, a black fence, we always say. Might as well put it in as a condition.
That you want the dumpster screened by a black fence? A black chain link fence?
What, does everybody agree?
I mean, you know, if you're going to be-
If you're going to be, I think there's already some screening in there about it, isn't it?
You know, if you're going to be that specific, then it needs to be specific. You know, I mean, are you talking a solid black fence, are you talking a chain link fence? The, I think the design review committee referenced, it references the, it references the, you know, the most recent plan. And on the, on the most recent plan...
Says privacy fence on mine, dumpster pad with privacy fence.
Yeah. So that, so the, the, I mean, what, what you've had other applicants do, that are visible along Main Street, is you've had them put, like, a stockade, a stockade fence around it?
The stockade is solid, so you can't see through it?
Mm-hmm.
Is it vinyl, the stockade? I don't know the definition of stockade, does it have to be vinyl?
No, I mean, that's a wood fence.
Yeah.
But it can be vinyl, I mean, you can, you can say that it needs to be a vinyl fence.
I think the privacy fence is, accomplishes what you want to achieve here, so.
I mean, just, just so that you know, and again, doesn't matter, but we're getting very specific here tonight, is that, you know, a privacy fence can be a chain link fence with the plastic slats through it. And if, and if that's okay with you, then that, you know, but-
I'm telling you, it's solid, that you can't see through it.
I also think it's in a little nook as well, is it? I feel like I saw this dumpster that, it was, here. Dumpster with privacy fence, right in the corner here, so... Yeah, it's probably not super visible, did you see that, Amy, as well?
Yes. Another, I read the fire chief letter, and it talked about the hydrant not being in the proper position. So I actually reached out to Fred about it, and he recommended a condition of the fire chief shall approve the location of the fire hydrant prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Are you talking about Fred Litchfield?
Yeah.
Did Fred Litchfield write a letter to us about that?
No, he, Amy reached out to him by email today, and, and asked him, and Fred suggested to the effect of, "The fire chief shall approve the location of the fire hydrant prior to the issuance of a building permit."
We also had a letter from Fred, from March 16th, 2021, with a lot of conditions on it, so I would like to use all his conditions in his memo. They're all different ones, I don't know if people have a copy of it, it's uploaded on the website, but it talks about the, um, the ones that we always use on groundwater, right, "The road salt or sand shall be stockpiled on site, the building shall be heated with natural gas," talks about stormwater and operations management plans, talks about asbuilds. It also says that the operation and maintenance inspection reports shall be submitted with an asbuild plan prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. The applicant will be required to pay a water privilege fee, and I think the applicant had gotten a copy of all this. The applicant will be required to obtain a permit from the earthquake board. The applicant will be required to obtain road opening permits for both water and sewer connections. I think we're going to have a condition that if there was an opportunity to connect to sewer, the applicant would connect to sewer.
Amy, what's the date on Fred's letter?
Uh, March 16th, 2021.
Thank you.
There are a couple on the first page, "No storage of toxic or hazardous chemicals beyond an amount normally found in a single family home." The onsite sewage disposal system is less than or equal to 110 gallons per day per 10,000 square feet of lot area. And then there was one, he recommends they connect to town sewer if they can. There are also, he mentioned three conditions that were from the June 29th, 2020 memo. Those three were, oh, this one actually looks like the same one, there's one about the no storage of toxic or hazardous chemicals. The applicant shall adhere to all the requirements of section 707, 010, D3B5, when the site plan approval application is filed, and then the town sewer. So I guess those three are what we already talked about.
So those three are reflected in Fred's current memo?
Yep, those three are already reflected, and-
Oh, yep, I see it.
The memo. There were a couple more, that are usually included on groundwater conditions, and I emailed Fred today, too, but I didn't get a hint from him, talking about permit ability tests. It's usually a condition that he adds. But unfortunately, I didn't hear back from him.
Do you have the exact language?
Yeah, I'm going to try to see.
I mean, usually if he doesn't include that in the letter, he's not looking for them, there's no need for them.
One of them had to do with the depth of groundwater, and that site is so wet, I would name-
Wetlands doesn't have anything to do with groundwater.
Yeah, but it had to do, I'll, I have to connect to the internet here, to be able to read it, unless I have it here. Oh, this was from 90 West Main Street. "The applicant must confirm the bottom of all infiltration areas are minimum two feet above any signs of groundwater." That was a question I had for him, because it's so wet here, just like it's wet there.
So...
But again, wetlands doesn't have anything to do with groundwater.
Fred had it was on, or, it was on our memo for 90 Southwest, I mean, he had 90 West Main.
So I'm, I'm going to guess that that was something very specific to that site? I mean, Fred's been writing your, you know, review letters, you know, for 25 years. I mean, not, not to say that any of us can make a mistake and forget a condition, but, you know, he, he went over his review letter with you, as far as the conditions that he wanted included?
One, one I would like included, that's included on all of them, I'm not sure why it wasn't, but it was, "The applicant should submit a statement in accordance with 707, 010, D4A5, which requires an analysis," well, I'm going to look that up, never mind, "but it, it requires an analysis by a technically qualified expert certifying that the quality and supply of the underlying groundwater resources will not be degraded to the point whereby a hazard to the public or ecological damage results." And he said that statement is required, and I'm going to look into that right now. But I do think that's an important one, and I'm not sure why he left it off, because it's on every, all the others.
So...
I think because there was confusion on whether the ZBA had all the groundwater, or we had all the groundwater conditions.
Well, I'm just going to ask, are, where are the groundwater, where are the conditions on the variance for groundwater, since it was in lieu of the groundwater special permit?
There weren't any put on it. They didn't add any conditions, which is why I went back and looked up all these conditions that we usually use. They didn't add any conditions, which is why I went back and looked up all these conditions that we usually use. And we do have like 90 days to pull up. If we're two or three, like if we go through all of our conditions and just want to ask Fred about the two or three, we could leave it open pending response from Fred. Because I wouldn't want to skip the important conditions just because we have 90 days.
All right, well, I'm going to take a note of that and then why don't we see what other conditions or thoughts we have? And then come back and decide if we want to hold for that or?
Sure.
Deal with it, okay.
So we, what did it go up to the ZBA to put on the conditions for the variance?
But they didn't. They didn't even put on the, the basic criteria. I think it was left off by mistake. I don't, the ZBA did it a year ago and there were some conditions that were mentioned, but then they didn't end up in the decision. Since we have 90 days, I'd like to ask him because the one that I just mentioned about the technically qualified expert was one that the groundwater has been asking for a lot recently from all the applicants. It was one that some of the applicants hadn't been doing and Fred has been getting them to do it. So I just want to double check on that. Because the ZBA did talk about this over a year ago.
Has there been any reason you think they just forgot to put conditions on?
I don't know what happened.
So would you go through Fred to ask about the conditions?
Yep, there were just three conditions and I emailed Fred.
The board should ask.
Right. Yep.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so I'm just looking at the variance decision. Okay, so there are no conditions.
Right. Which is odd because every groundwater decision always has the groundwater conditions on it. Fred has a long list that's always included. And because the variance didn't include them, we have to, we should include them in ours because this is a delicate area. There's a lot of water on there.
So were you on groundwater when you went through?
I was on groundwater.
And you guys would put the conditions to recommend them to ZBA?
Recommend them to ZBA.
Okay, okay.
Yep. Okay. And for some reason it just, they just weren't included.
Okay.
And there have been a couple of recommendations, like the one I just read, that have changed since that application went through. So I just want to make sure. And there were three and I emailed them to Fred this afternoon. One other one I was sending you about, I didn't know if we, as a board, if, I think it was discussed about the sound analysis. We, did we talk about that for this one or it was a different application?
What analysis?
The sound analysis. Or there was only one trucking base, so you don't need a sound analysis.
Yeah, I think that's overkill. I think that's unnecessary.
No, I was just wanted to run by recent conditions. How about all commercial drivers would be instructed? We had talked about when they exit Lyman Street, just because we as a board, you know, when they get to the end of Bartlett Street, he could instruct the drivers to turn right towards Shimano Drive versus turning left towards the town.
Yeah.
And I know it's only one truck or maybe more, I don't know. But I think he agreed on it to instruct the commercial drivers.
I think it's better to put out signage.
At the, at your June 1st meeting, the applicant agreed that Lyman, the Lyman Street driveway would be exit only. And Bartlett Street would be entrance and exit, but that tractor trailers can only exit via Lyman Street.
That's right, because why, they couldn't back out anyway. The tractor, that's the whole point of the flow.
Yep. Between wanting to condition that, it's just like word of mouth that they ask the trucks when they get onto the Lyman Street site to take a right versus going left through town.
So we did talk about that and I, and I don't disagree with that as a concept. But one thing we talked about was if all the trucks had to go at that exit, there'd be no trucks going onto Bartlett Street theoretically. We would already accomplish that by having, by way of having to exit Lyman. So technically, there should be no trucks.
Right, but once they get to the end of Lyman.
But then when they would get to the intersection of Lyman and Bartlett.
Onto Bartlett rather than going to the one, I think that that's.
That's a public road though. I just wonder if we can actually condition that. Right, Lyman, can we condition that coming off Lyman Street?
Instruction, but I don't know.
Just instructions.
Just instruction.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, we couldn't put signage up there or anything. It would just be an instruction. I think we asked him to, you know. We would just instruct the drivers. But we can't put signage at the end of Lyman Street. To turn right unless it's a local delivery.
Okay.
When they get to Lyman Street.
So a couple of things going on there. Exit only for commercial trucks or was it tractor trailers? Is that what we called it? Tractor trailers go out exit only.
I think everything is only.
At your last meeting, you had discussed tractor trailers.
Exit only on Lyman. But if you're an employee, you could exit on Lyman or Bartlett. The Bartlett entrance is in and out. Is that your understanding too?
I thought it was exit only for all cars on Lyman Street. The Bartlett was in and out and Lyman was exit only for everybody.
You're right, you're right. I'm sorry, so a lot, yeah, I was not checking any of that right. Lyman Street is exit only for everybody, but Bartlett Street is enter and out exit.
Yeah. So I think on Lyman Street, it was discussed that you do not enter sign.
Yes.
This is the ones I thought of.
Okay. All right, additional thoughts from members?
I don't have any additional. I agree with all of us on.
I don't see anything from you.
Uh-uh. I think that sounded pretty thorough.
Okay, I just have a couple additional items. So I think, I agree, Amy, with your statement that the applicant, you know, really worked well with the town trying to make this. This is obviously a tricky area. It abuts residential. It's very difficult to, you know, allow someone to build on their property, but also be sensitive to the residential, you know, abutting residential in the way that it does and that whole sensitivity surrounding that area. So I think I was happy to see how they really worked to make that. You know, we always, like I said before, I think we always hope that applicants will work with us and, you know, kind of do those sorts of things and they did it. So I was really appreciative of that. That aside, I, I just want to not set any, I, this had as a variance to it. So I think I'd like to recognize that in this as a condition that even though automatically the variance appeal needs to go through, the decision needs to be made before something's filed. I think we should include language just to reiterate that the variance must be settled in court before anything. Yeah, subject to, something to that effect about the variance. I mean, truth be told, I, I was not in favor of that variance being granted. I don't think a warehouse belongs on groundwater one. However, that's not in our purview. So I understand that in looking at my own purview, that's not a decision that I'm responsible for making. So I'm not saying that to base the decision on. I'm just noting that, you know, in general, I don't feel that a warehouse belongs on groundwater one, but not my purview, not the board's purview. However, I would like to note that variance is part of a condition. I also, we talked about, what I was really nervous about is that because they did such a nice job with making this a plan that works for that area, I get really nervous that because they need to wait for this variance and, you know, because ownership can change hands and all of that, that I did not, I don't want to be stuck with something different at the end. I think that they worked really hard to come to this. We work hard to work through it. So I want to make sure we put in language that is not overly restrictive to the applicant, but also protects the town and, you know, the neighbors for when, if anything is to change, that this needs to come back to the board. So I think the town council provided language that I, it sounded like the applicant agreed to. That was basically, let's see, he had said in his comments, "The board can include a condition that approval is for the project as presented in the application and supporting documents provided to the board with specific references to plans, statements and related materials so that a change from the application approved would require modification of a special permit." I'd like to add, they'd have to come back to the planning board for modification to a special permit. And I think, I think we need to be, like things we talked about being cognizant of, like not things like we're going to be outside counting trucks or we're going to be like counting flowers. But, you know, in common sense terms, what if something changes? Like all of a sudden, the traffic is going the reverse way or there's, you know, things like that. I think was the spirit of that. I don't know if Board Members sent in any thoughts on that or if you also find that necessary?
I think we spoke about last time about if volume of traffic or trucks changed from the way it was presented, then we would have, we could revisit it. And they provided statistics in the PowerPoint slides. We could use that as the basis.
So as an example of something that could change, like that type of thing?
Now, I don't know if we can point back to the PowerPoint slide. Like, do we have to write in the decision if it, it changes more than like so many deliveries a day?
Right.
Let's see.
One slide, it said 32 trips a day and that included UPS and it included the employees.
The suggestion from town council, which was more general than, you know, he didn't cite a certain amount of employees or, or truck traffic, but, but I think it's more comprehensive in that way. He said to make a reference that the approval of this project is as presented in the application and the supporting documents provided to the board with specific references to plans, statements and related materials so that a change from the application approved would require modification of the special permit. So that gives you, that's pretty broad.
No, I do think that's broad, but do we have to actually put the specific references to plans? Like is that, is he, it looks like there's no.
That will be part of the, that's always under the exhibits.
Okay.
And then there's usually a statement somewhere in the condition that, you know.
Refer to the.
Yeah, construction shall be in accordance with the plans, you know, dated such and such.
Okay. Does that satisfy the spirit of what we're trying to do in Board Members' minds?
So like on April 16th, 2021, we got a letter from Cable Matters and it talks about parking spaces, sewer and trucks. So that would be something that Bob could refer to if he had to make an enforcement action? Is that what it's saying? That any paperwork that was supplied to us?
Yeah, and it, yeah, he, I mean, again, any presented in the application and supporting documents provided to the board. So anything that's made part of the record, you know, and that's where, you know, in the, in the decision section, there's a, there's a part, it's all the exhibits. So, you know, that would all be referenced in there.
Or we could make this simple too. I mean, in, in the presentation, if you add everything up, it's 32 traffic trips per day and then one trailer every two to three months.
Is that too specific, you think?
That's too specific.
So.
Well, I just worry that, like, do we make it a percentage increase over that? Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea.
Increases by how much, so like 20%? Because that would only be like six extra trips.
Yeah, I, I feel like in general, we were, our message was, we're not looking to count trucks, but we want something in place in case, in case there's some sort of, I think even the attorney Gould had said, like in case there's a nuisance, like that, you know, something to fall back on. What would be a nuisance in our, in the spirit of what we're trying to do? What is a nuisance? Like what, is it traffic that disturbs the neighborhood or disturbs the peace and quiet of the neighborhood, like something like that? That, or, I mean, I don't want to make it too subjective, but.
Right.
That's, that's the spirit we're trying to get at. So is there a way to do that without, you know, obviously we don't want the applicant to be limited to, there are 32 trucks they promised us on this day, but I don't know if there's a good way to do that. What do you think of?
I mean, if it was up by 50%, that's what it had in 16 more. If it increases by 50%. Because I think you have to put a number on it because it's, it is so subjective. Like if they say that it becomes more noisy.
But until you not put a number into space, significantly changes. And helps to make a determination of what significant is.
Yeah, how do you decide what's significant?
Well, significant might be 50%, could be 60%, but I don't think you can do, you're in an industrial zone. You can't, it's like, how do you know the trucks are, you're going to sit out there and have someone count the trucks every day? It's just, you know, you've got employees coming in and one truck in the morning and two trucks in the morning and two trucks at night.
I think Bob needs a number though. It says one trailer, truck, trailer truck every two to three months. So all of a sudden, there's five. Then someone could say to Bob, oh, it's gone over 50%.
So five trucks in three months is just one a month. It's like seven and a half a month. How are you going to notice that?
Even notice?
Really going to notice that?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying a number. You have to, the neighbors might because they were promised one tractor trailer.
I think the intent is like you get a second loading bay, right? And all of a sudden, you know, there's, they're using up more parking spaces than are intended. You know, there are, there are subtle changes that happen to the building or the, you know, versus, oh, I just saw, you know, in three months, I saw five trucks come out versus one truck.
I don't think they could change a truck, add a truck in.
That's what I'm saying, because it's a significant change to the building.
So is that, that's a question I had. Is that a condition if they, because it appears that it was designed to add, be capable of adding another truck bay if they desired. Would they have to come back to the board?
Yes.
Based on if you put this condition in from town council.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. It's really any change.
Okay.
Has to come back.
Gotcha.
So does that, that may cover us then? Does that cover us?
Right, so I mean, Bob may, you know, say they come in to change a windows or a door or something. You know, that's not, Bob's going to make that as an in-house.
Yeah.
You know, that's just a, you know, kind of cost of doing business thing. They're upgrading or whatever. But if they're coming in to add in another loading dock or to put an addition on or to expand their parking because, you know, their business now requires additional parking, that's going to land before you.
Yeah, and you just took away 10 spaces and put on the asphalt, no parking.
I think that, that denoting and change would have to come back to us. Would cover it?
And then why don't we make sure as part of the plans we reference, we include the traffic estimate? So as part of the, like whatever we're referring back to, the traffic estimate would be part of that anyway, right?
Mm-hmm, yep. That, yeah, it would be listed as one of the exhibits.
That would be part of, does that work?
Yeah, and the PowerPoint should be in exhibit too, right?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, that's what I had in my head when I said that. Yeah. You had something for us?
You know, if they wanted to change that, that would be a change.
Okay. Okay, let's see. I think, Amy, you covered a lot of the things that I had. Just a recap of where we stand to make sure we have, let's see. Did we decide, what did we decide to do about the lighting plan? Or we just want to make sure that the light did not spill over? That the lighting plan is as presented and there's no light spill over into the neighbor's yard?
There is already that. It already shows there is no spillage.
Okay.
So the only thing you're asking them is for the lights to, the parking lot lights to be turned off at 9:00 PM. But the.
Wall pack.
Light stay on.
Okay, Amy, did you find that in that memo or no?
No, I didn't find it.
All right.
But if, maybe if I'm coming back or we're coming back to ask for those three conditions, I can look it up and see what the light condition that I saw. There was just a mention and then I saw the disclaimer on the light plan saying this is only perceptible. I just wanted to make sure that what we see is what we get.
So you have several questions? So you have several questions for Fred, Amy, right?
Yep.
So why don't you make that as one of your questions?
Right.
Let Fred tell the board.
Okay, so I'm gonna hold that one. Another one on the table is hours of lighting, so we have lights, light poles off at nine, wall packs stay lit. We're gonna take ten lines, or ten parking spaces, and put either the stri, was it the striping and no parking, or just no parking? What, I guess whatever makes sense.
I need to take out the striping, and then there's.
Oh, that's what that meant, okay. I thought Millie said, like, make the marks, uh, no parking, yep.
I don't know if I have that.
Just putting no parking is fine.
No parking's fine, okay. Um, I have landscaping in perpetuity, no outside storage of goods, um, you know, in and around the loading dock area. Do we need to do anything with the dumpster? Did we decide that's covered with the privacy? That was in the plan, I think?
Yeah, I think it's covered.
Okay, dumpster's covered. Um, fire chief is to approve the location of the fire hydrant prior to issuance of a building permit. Fred's conditions from the March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one memo. Um, we have outstanding questions on typical groundwater conditions, if they apply here.
Yes, I agree, I export them to the whole board and Fred.
Amy, when you sent him an email today, did you ask him tho, those specific conditions?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Did he happen to reply? I didn't see. I didn't see response, okay. Um, instruction to commercial drivers to go right towards Simorano at Lyman. The flow will be exit only onto Lyman.
Wait, I missed that one about the commercial drivers.
So instructed.
Commercial drivers can only turn right?
But, so there's no sign there, because it's on Lyman Street, but there'll be instruction to commercial drivers to turn right at Lyman towards Simorano Drive. Um, the flow, there will be an exit only, so I guess if, if they need to follow the turning, the turning exhibit that they submitted? That, that was submitted as part of their plan, correct? We don't need to reference it at all?
Correct. That was just to show you, and, well, oftentimes, it's shown to the fire chief, too, but because it applies to his equipment also, as to how they can swing in and out of the, of a site. But that was just to show you how, I think the driveway had to be slightly adjusted, so that the trucks could make that swing out of the driveway.
Okay, so then we had a "Do not enter" sign, and an "Exit only" sign over that area. Then I have variance, appeal must obviously have a decision, or filed with the registry of deeds. I believe that would indicate a decision's been made, if it's filed with the registry.
Yeah, um, I don't know how a court decision, I don't know how that gets.
Oh, but we would know it was, there was a.
Right, we, well, right, because, I mean, the town is named in it, so, you know, we would receive notice of it.
Okay.
But, but I honestly don't know, Carrie, anything about the registry, if a court decision is recorded there.
Okay. Um, and then the language provided from Town Council about the project being presented in the application, et cetera, we discuss that at length. That's what I have written down for current conditions.
I had one more thing that I missed.
Sure.
We had done a lot of discussion about the plantings along the residential side, and today, when I was looking at the site design conditions, there's supposed to be a landscape buffer of twenty feet in between two industrial parcels, and right now, it's a strip of grass, and near the road, there's a crab tree, there's a specific name for it, if I wanna Google it, it's a crab tree, tree, and there's one at the back by the dumpster, and I was just wondering if, like, three more crab trees can be added into the, into the middle of that, because that, one of the site design conditions is the parking should have landscaping there, and, and there should be a landscape buffer between industrials, so I thought if we added a couple more trees, because it's gonna be clear cut all the way to the next warehouse, so it'll be kinda like warehouse to warehouse with grass and parking, and I thought if we could add a couple more trees back in. And I only picked the crab tree, because that's what the designer view had picked right along that area. So I have, if anybody wants to see it, but it's on, uh, in between the two parcels, one Lyman and one Seventy Bartlett Street. There's a small strip.
So there's nothing there right now?
There's nothing there right now. It's, it's being clear cut all the way over.
I think, should we put, like, crab trees are similar, just in case there's a, or is it just, you picked that because they're?
I picked that, because that's what they used.
Oh, okay, so.
In their plan, they called it a M.A.L.U.S., Malius Prairie Fire, and when I looked it up, that was a crab tree, and there's four near the entrance, and there's one back by the dumpster. So then there's this blank strip of grass here. If we just put three or four more crab trees in it, it might buffer the lands, between the two industrial areas. On ninety West Main Street, they use linden trees, so I looked up those, but then I thought maybe use what they were already using on this site, same type of tree, so it all blends.
Are there any other industrial properties that have those between them, that have trees and things like that, or natural?
I might have to go on and look, but our landscape buffer calls for it, like, in our site design plan, for a landscape buffer in between, and it also offsets the huge amount of arcing out here.
Oh, right, so I see what you're looking at, so there's, that's parking right there, and there's nothing there. What's the curvy line? Was this the perimeter?
That's where the other property is, and there are probably some trees there, but when I did a Google down view, there really wasn't many trees there, so it's just gonna clear cut, so even from Lyman Street, you might be able to see straight over to the other warehouse. So it might be nice to have a couple trees in between. And our site design standards call for the trees, so just buffer off all the arcing.
Industrial.
So this Malus Prairie Fire, which is a crab tree, just maybe reapply more in between the two properties.
But you're figuring that out, because you're looking at it from Google Earth?
Huh? Yeah, drove by, and then there's Google Earth, when I did Google.
So maybe you can ask Fred or staff to confirm that, because maybe there are trees there, but you can't, you're looking at it through Google Earth.
Well, it was a picture that you looked at, and you could see that one seventy-three?
Yeah, but I'm saying, maybe staff can go drive by and make sure that there are trees there.
Well, there won't be once they're clear cut. There are trees right now on this property that will be clear cut all the way up to the property line for the parking.
And if, what I'm saying is, you have questions for Fred, maybe he could go take a look.
Well, I don't know, where the site design, as a planning board, we make the decisions on landscaping. It calls for a twenty-foot buffer in between the two properties.
I get there, but you're saying that you can tell through Google Earth, there's no trees gonna be there. I'm just saying, it would be good if somebody could go out and say, "Yep, that's right, it'll be clear cut, there won't be, we recommend the three trees there."
I could tell from the pictures that were given, there were no trees there. There's ten feet of grass.
You know, one of the things, I'm just thinking, you, you say, you know, you've, you've got these outstanding questions for Fred, you can also, so that you could end this tonight, you can also, you know, add a condition that if, if the town engineer, you know, neglected to put those conditions in, you know, they can be added, and then if he purposely did not put them in his letter, then, then they won't be added, you know, as opposed to having to come back. I'm just throwing that out there.
I just like to ask them why, you know, I just have a question. But from this design, you can see it's, the driveway and the parking will be here, and then it's ten feet of grass, so we can't count on the other neighbor to put in trees to offset our landscape buffer, like, the landscape buffer with the trees is up to this applicant, not the next door neighbor, is what I'm saying. It's a ten-foot strip of grass, we could just add a couple trees.
Okay, do, do we want to add something like that? Do we want?
No, this is, doesn't show the parking, but this is this side of the building, and it's parking, there's a ten-foot buffer, and we're actually supposed to have twenty feet, so I think as a little waiver allowance, we could at least put a couple trees in there. There was supposed to be twenty feet in between industrial sites.
A twenty-foot buffer, or?
A twenty-foot, yep, buffer.
A landscape buffer, or a distance?
Yep.
Is grass?
I think it's just a distance.
Yeah.
But if you have so much parking, you're supposed to have so much landscaping there, too. So the two went together.
Put that in as a condition, if Fred determines it to be so, rather than hold it up.
But I think that's up to us, not really Fred, he's not.
If, if it's actually a condition of the site design, though.
Oh, yeah, we have it right here in our.
Yeah.
It just, it doesn't say landscape buffer, it just says, "For any business or industrial use, abutting another business or industrial use, an open space area of up to twenty feet may be required."
Yeah, so.
Yep, so it says open space, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right, and that it may be required.
Yep.
That's in your site design standards.
Yep.
So the landscape architect took twenty feet and made it grass and not trees?
Right.
But you're disputing that, and you want trees?
I, I think four trees would look nice, or clear cutting the whole property.
They're also planting many trees on the property.
Yeah, but on the other side, there's no trees on this side.
Okay, so where am I? Just clarify the bottom of the webpage.
It's on page eighty-four. Towards the top, Carrie, a number two, section seven dash zero nine dash two zero two.
Seven eighty-four on the top?
Okay. There's also seven ninety-five.
Yeah.
On page seven ninety-five. You have seven ninety-five, it also says, "To separate parking areas from abutting streets, provide areas for snow disposal, to break up expanses of vehicles in paved areas, and to provide beautification of parking facilities. At least ten percent of the paved area of a parking facility with more than thirty parking spaces shall be in landscaped open space. At least one tree shall be provided for every ten parking stalls in a parking facility. They shall be at least two inches in trunk diameter." It's just a big expanse of parking in the back, and a couple trees, or shrubs. And these aren't those big trees that they're trucking in, these are just crab tree, crab apple.
I think it's over, it seems okay. I don't know how the Board Members feel.
I don't, I don't think we should hint on that, I think he's definitely done a lot, but, you know, if they're willing to do it, that would be great.
Or we could do, what could we do, like, crab trees are similar, or, so then it could be up to them to kind of, if they wanted to do a different kind of, or?
I guess, yeah.
Or shrubbery or something?
Yeah, or, I don't know if they want to go back to the drawing bar, just, right now, there's a lot of little plantings, but the trees that they use, either were the big apples or the crab trees.
But that's a five right there.
Yep.
In the, uh, no, sorry, in your hand.
Yep.
So that is facing to the next property over, and in between, that's the parking area.
Yeah.
So it's really, that parking area's not gonna be that thin, that's actually a big chunk of space.
Right.
So it's kind of misleading when you look, like, it doesn't look like a big deal in that picture, but if you were to think of a parking lot, you've got like a huge amount of space with nothing, and then the grass with nothing.
Right, it's gonna be really big, because you're gonna get eighteen wheelers pulling through, plus parking spaces.
All right, well, why don't we start with, in general, do Board Members want something in that space? Regardless of what it is, do we want something there? Michelle, it sounds like you don't.
No, I think it was designed appropriately.
Okay, Millie, do you want anything there?
I'm, I'm okay with the design, I think you've done a good job.
Okay, Anthony, do you want something there?
I'm just, I'm looking at the interior landscaping bylaws, I mean, it does say for every ten, it does say for, yeah, "At least one tree shall be provided, shall be provided for every ten parking stalls in a parking facility."
Yeah, I mean, they've exceeded that on the site.
If you look at the drawing.
Trees on the site, right?
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, you know, throughout the whole site, Anthony, they've got more than, you know, one tree for every ten spaces.
Yeah.
But if you look at the visual, all these trees in this visual will come down, so there's like waterfall and stuff, these aren't real visuals, so.
Well, that, yeah, that's, those aren't real trees.
Right, rendition. So all the trees will come down, I'm just thinking, if there were a couple trees in there, even if the neighbors could see through the back, it would break up the other warehouse, at least, if you're a couple trees in between.
Okay, so do you, are you interested in something there, or nothing? You like it as is?
I thi, I think they've done enough as far as landscaping, is what I think.
Okay, so me, only Amy and I were for the trees, so I don't think that would be a majority on that condition. Okay, other, any other conditions?
And Carrie, do you just want to add, um, I mean, it wouldn't be a condition in the decision, but tonight, for you to all agree that if Fred wants to add those additional groundwater questions, I, I don't even know what they are, but I wasn't on the email, so whatever Amy wrote to Fred, I mean, I think you all should know what, what that is first. Um, and then, you know, if Fred thinks that those should be added, that he omitted them, either, you know, if he omitted them purposely, then, you know, you, we keep them out, and they're not in the decision, but if he did omit them, you know, by error, then we add them into the decision. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, condition, yeah.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, and Amy, you're looking up what those are, it's just the usual.
I have one here, I can read them, or I can forward them to the whole board.
No, do you want to just let us know what they are, and then we can solve this?
Sure, well, these were the three that have been included on other groundwater applications. The applicant should submit a statement in accordance with seven oh seven oh one oh D four A five, which requires an analysis by a technically qualified expert certifying that the quality and supply of the underlying groundwater resources will not be degraded to the point whereby a hazard to the public or ecological damage results, and this statement is required. You have that on another one. And then it talks about a minimum of permeability tests, and sometimes he has one, and sometimes he has two, about the dry wells, and he always asks for either one or two, so I thought he could choose whether he wanted one or two permeability tests to verify the assumption made in the town's design. It shall be submitted, performed and submitted to the town engineer prior to the issuance of the building permit. And then the third one was, the applicant must confirm the bottom of all infiltration areas are minimum of two feet above any signs of groundwater, and those are some conditions that usually include, so I just wanted to ask him.
Okay, so does, do Board Members feel okay to say, if Fred intended to include them, put them in, if he intended to exclude them, leave them out?
Yep.
Does that work for everybody? Amy, does that meet what you wanted to do as well?
Sure.
Okay, regarding the lighting plan, where we had a question, is there anything we could say there? If not the engineer stamp, then, I mean, I suppose it has to, the plan has to meet as it's been submitted anyway, so in the plan, there's no spill over, so they must, therefore, there's no spill over, okay. Okay, the other thing I had a question about, Kathy, for you, do we need to put anything about the demo permit as a condition, or?
No, that's a, that's a separate bylaw that Millie's very familiar with, on Historic District Commission, but, but that's a separate bylaw, separate board, it's a process that the Historic District Commission and Bob have to go through, and until that's satisfied, a demo permit doesn't get issued.
Okay, so it's separate, that's fine. Um, okay, so let's see, I just want to go through my list and make sure I didn't miss anything. Oh, does the, um, septic have to go, or any sort of septic or sewer have to go to the Board of Health at all?
Septic goes to Board of Health.
Okay.
Sewer is with the DPW.
Okay, so we don't have to condition that. It automatically goes to Board of Health?
Correct, yeah. Whether it's septic, sewer, private well, or municipal water. That's two, you know, two separate boards.
Okay. Let's see, so they have presented it with septic, but we've conditioned that if they can go to sewer, they should. So that means, that other condition doesn't mean they have to come back if they've gone from septic to sewer.
Right, that would, right, that's just internal, and as to, you know, who they need to go to a permit for. And I think that's in Fred's letter, right?
Oh, yep. Put that in his letter.
Something about from the DPW.
Yep. Okay, so parking. We talked about, I guess, lights out are at, I think we talked about delivery hours between 9:00 and 6:00. Is that a condition that we, I think we can condition the hours of delivery? And that's one we talked about before, or is that something we still want to condition?
I, I did think that they said on occasion, some of the deliveries are a bit later.
Till 8:00?
Agreed, so they asked for 8 o'clock.
Yeah, rather than condition it at 6:00.
Yep.
So 9:00 to 8:00?
Yeah.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Okay, so that's just.
So, so 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM for deliveries?
Yes.
Monday through Saturday? Mon, 7 days?
Check that one just here.
Said Monday through Fridays for hours of operation. Said Monday through Fridays.
Yeah. Is that still something we want to condition? Monday through Fridays, 9:00 to 8:00? It, it's just for deliveries, so it's not like, they can't, they can still go to, you know, their indoor operations would be different.
Yeah.
So is that okay for deliveries?
I think that's what they agreed to.
Yep.
Okay, the, which is, the lights out is actually 9:00, so it's a little bit later than the deliveries, which makes sense. Okay, variance. The turn, we don't have to condition. We've got landscaping. Storage of goods. Lighting. Hours. Oh, one other thing we talked about, um, what we wanted to avoid, too, was those big giant generator lights. So there was a property down the street that, you know, later on, they put these big generator lights on. I don't, you know, as part of construction, I don't think we can do a whole lot about that, but I, I can't imagine after the fact they'd have any reason to run generator lights. I guess they'd have to go, they'd have to, um, maintain their light plan no matter what, and their light plan doesn't include that type of lighting. So that should be covered, the generator type lights?
Yeah, um, yes, and, but also, too, if, I mean, if you wanted to add a condition that specific, we'd have to be, um, we'd have to word it so that, you know, in the event of some sort of, you know, um, you know, lights out, you know, the ice storm from a few years ago where, you know, people didn't have electricity for, you know, a week, you know, they might have generators out there, you know, to run their business, or to, to at least keep safety lights on or something, so I don't know.
Well, maybe they're not called generator lights.
You know, how limiting that would be.
Yeah, I don't mean to say like generator to power the operations, but do you know on Bartlett, the big, like, the super, super bright lights?
Yeah, at Amazon.
Are those called generator lights? I don't know what they're called.
Well, I know what you're talking about, so, yeah.
You know what I mean. Are we covered in our current light plan to not have that happen on site, to have surprise generator lights?
Well, Amazon had those same light plans, so I don't know how they're there. Because if, if we're not covered that Amazon has them, then this would be the same, because Amazon did the same lighting spillover plan.
Correct. I mean, it was before, it was, I mean, we didn't know it was Amazon, you know? I mean, it was approved on, you know, not knowing who the tenant was. I mean, this one, you know the specific tenant.
Do you know how Amazon is allowed to do it now?
Now, I know it's been a question. I'll check with the building inspector.
Do you put changes or additional lighting?
Maybe changes or additional lighting to the current plan?
Yeah.
No changes to the, or?
Which kind of goes back to that.
The original, if something changed.
Town council condition.
Changes, it's covered, yeah.
All right. Okay, um, anything else? Does anyone want me to go over the conditions again? Okay.
Amy shaking her head, no.
Well, I think we got it right.
Go with that.
Well, because now I want you to keep these conditions in mind when we go through the criteria, because it changed, it may change some of your answers. So, assuming that the board agrees on all the conditions we just discussed, why don't we take a look at the criteria and look at, based on, if we were to approve these conditions, would we approve this special permit? Would we approve based on special permit criteria, considering all the conditions we just discussed? So, why don't we walk through the criteria of the special permit? Number one, the proposal is in substantial harmony with the Northborough Master Plan and other plans approved or amended from time to time by the planning board, and with the purpose of this bylaw. Any comments there?
I think it is.
The proposed site is an appropriate location for such use?
I think it is.
Any comments other than over here? Dylan? Okay. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. So I think with these conditions and the work that they've done with design review, that seems to.
Right, because it was a variance by the ZBA, so we can't really, but with the conditions, they agree. It helps to, less any adverse effects.
Okay. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use.
I agree.
Okay. The proposed use will conform to any special requirements of the special permit granted authority as stated in its written decision.
It has to.
Yep. And the proposal cannot be reasonably altered to reduce adverse impacts on the natural environment, to be compatible with historic development patterns of the town, or to preserve historically significant buildings. Okay, so it sounds like the board thinks that this application meets the criteria for the special permit. So I will entertain a motion. This is going to be a monster motion. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the special permit with the following conditions. The hours of lighting, the light poles will shut down at 9:00 PM, but the wall packs will stay lit, with the condition that they will take, remove the lines from the first 10 parking spaces on the backside of the lot, and put no parking on the pavement in that area. That landscaping be maintained in perpetuity. That no outside storage of goods will be held outside, specifically around the loading dock area. That the fire chief approves the location of the fire hydrant prior to the issuance of a building permit. That if Fred intended to include groundwater conditions, the three groundwater conditions we discussed, that he would have the ability to add them, but if he intended to exclude them, we will leave them out. That instruction to commercial drivers to turn right towards Somerano Drive at Lyman will be given. That the flow will be exit-only onto Lyman for tractor-trailers, actually for everybody, excuse me. The flow will be exit-only, there will be a sign that says exit-only at the Lyman Street exit, and also a do-not-enter sign. That the, uh, project not go forward until the variance is decided in court, the variance appeal is decided in court. That the project, that the... A condition that approval for the project is for the project as presented in the application and supporting documents provided to the board with specific references to plan statements and related materials, so that a change from the application approved would require modification, coming back to the planning board for modification of the special permit. That the hours of deliveries will be 9:00 to 8:00, 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
I was going to say something, but I want to make sure.
Don't move it, don't move it.
She's looking. I don't want to do it, so we have to do an amendment.
Okay. So, the motion right now, so far, is that we are approving the special permit with those conditions, on the grounds that it meets all of the seven special permit criteria. And for the, for the reasons, for the reasons discussed as part of deliberation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, and I will do a roll, so right now, there's a motion that has been made and seconded to approve the special permit. I will do a roll call vote, and if you care to add anything specific to your vote, please do so at that time. Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, the special permit has been approved unanimously. Next, we will look at the, approve the site plan. So we're going to switch over to that. Okay, so I'm looking at the decision criteria for the spec, for the, excuse me, for the site plan. So this is the site plan, obviously for one Lyman Street. If you'd want, I think everybody has a copy of the bylaws, you can read it, unless you want me to read it to you. Okay, just quickly, actually, why don't we go through and just make sure the board is in agreement here? The site plan meets all applicable requirements of the bylaw. Does anyone think otherwise? Okay, the next one, given the location type and extent of land use proposed by the proponent, the design of building form, building location, egress points, grading, and other elements of the site plan could not be reasonably altered to, number one, reduce clearing and grading on the site, and so on, as read in number one. Reduce the risk of groundwater contamination from onsite wastewater disposal systems or operations on the premises, and so on. Improve pedestrian, bicycle, or vehicular safety, both onsite, and so on. Improve access to each structure for fire and other emergency service equipment. Reduce visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage, or the outdoor service areas, and so on. Achieve greater consistency and compatibility with the surrounding areas as to building design or scale or site design. Reduce glare from headlights, reduce light trespass from luminaires on adjacent lots or the street, or light overspill into the night sky. Avoid the removal or disruption of historic, traditional, or significant structures or architectural elements, and reduce obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. Could the site plan be reasonably altered to change any of what I've just read? I think all of our conditions on the special permit help to meet these items. Does anyone disagree? And then I think, I, I'm not sure, I, I think this came to the entire planning board, but the applicant has worked, Millie, you could speak to this maybe, on the historic, working to salvage the materials from the wood at the barn, so that's in the progress as well. Okay. And then finally, any variance required from the ZBA has been granted. So in this case, I think technically the ZBA has granted this. It is an appeal, and we have that as a condition, but otherwise, in terms of the site plan, the variance has been grant, technically granted. Any comments or thoughts on that otherwise? Okay, is, I will entertain a motion to approve the site plan for one Lyman Street. Just one Lyman Street, okay. So I will entertain a motion to approve the site plan for one Lyman Street on the grounds that it meets all of the decision criteria. Oh, motion, so moved.
Oh, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to approve the site plan. I'll do a roll call vote for this. Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Okay, that is it for one Lyman Street, thank you. Okay, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, we are not covering a board discussion regarding design review committee, so we're going to move on to old business this evening. Did everyone have a chance? I think we only have the first three sets of minutes, Kathy, I don't think we have...
Correct.
So why don't we start with the minutes from April 6? Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes from April 6?
Yes.
Okay, any amendments to the minutes?
I think I... Let's see. There's a typo redundancy on page 3, about five lines up from the first large paragraph. It reads that...
Oh, wait, hold on one quick second. Kathy, are you writing this down, or do you want me to write, record this in the minutes?
It doesn't, I, I don't have a preference, but, I, I mean, Melanie is going to be watching this tape, so...
Oh, okay, all right.
If this is how she'll do the minutes, so if you just make note of, you know, what it is that you're changing.
Okay. Okay, sorry to interrupt, go ahead, Mar.
No worries. The sentence starts off, town council's conclusion was, and it says is, so it's either one or the other. Was-is that you don't apply.
Okay.
That, and the end of that sentence, it goes to say permit criteria to the site plan approval because it's, and then that repeats the next sentence, because it is a. It's just some typo there.
Okay.
I think that was... On page 4, we're talking about the articles that we're going to be presenting to town meeting, and it just gets confusing the way it was stated versus the way someone later would read it. Uh, second paragraph, pretty much right in the middle, where Fran Backstrom, some 76 Cedar Hill Road, agreed that the letter M, but there's no really reference to what the letter, quote-unquote, M is from. So I thought if you put it in the list item, M. Is it's a list of items? Does that make sense?
Yes, and now I'm feeling like we actually corrected these minutes before. Or maybe this was an error in a previous one as well.
I don't think that these were approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
It just, it sounds familiar. I, maybe I noticed the same thing.
So I think maybe where it says the letter M.
I don't know.
It should say list item, M.
Okay.
I think that's about it for me.
Okay. Any other amendments to the minutes?
No.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the April 6 minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Yep. Michelle?
Aye.
Let's see, then we have the minutes from the April 20th. And did everyone have a chance to read the April 20th minutes? Okay, any amendments to April 20th?
I had a couple.
Okay.
On the first page, where it says review of the site plan approval, application for 90 West Main Street, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lines down, it says the special permit is straightforward. I thought we should remove that statement unless we say, who said the special permit is straightforward? Like, it's just kind of a statement there saying the special permit is straightforward, and I don't know if, if, you know, it, I just thought it should be removed, because I don't know who said it, if Melanie said it, or I said it, or... know who said it, if Melanie said it, or I said it, or, it's just kind of a statement.
Okay.
So, I thought we should remove it. Um, let's see, I have these up, but I did these so long ago, so, I just have to go back. The same page, the bottom paragraph, it said, Ms. Peretzky had a concern, let me see, Ms. Peretzky had a concern. I'll just have to read this, because it's been so long. It was talking about parking spaces, and I just had, Ms. Peretzky had a concern with the 20% reduction, and I was gonna take out for downtown business properties, because it had nothing to do with that. 25% reduction with downtown business properties, it was a 25% reduction in parking.
Yeah, 25% parking reduction, yeah.
Yeah, so, Ms. Peretzky had a concern with the 25% parking reduction.
Yep.
And, um, in this next sentence, I added, Mr. Riordan stated, wall packs will light the back of the building, or, wall packs will light the building, because it doesn't say who stated it, it makes it sound like it's still me. Wall packs will light the back of the building, so I just added, Mr. Riordan stated, wall packs will light the building. It wasn't even the back of the building, it was the building, on that sentence. For the next sentence, instead of she said, everything is moved forward into Groundwater Three, I wrote, Ms. Peretzky noted that everything is moved forward into Groundwater Three, and was concerned, there may be a need for more parking. Like, it didn't, it went from me to Mr. Riordan to she, so I wanted to say she was Ms. Peretzky. Mr. Colana said. Mr. Colana said it will not get into Groundwater Two, but, that was for the parking, so, where it says, it will not get into, Mr. Colana said, they will not park on the Groundwater Two, it is an eight-foot drop. So, it will not get into wasn't the right wording, it was, they will not park on Groundwater Two. It is an eight-foot drop, on the, it's the third sentence. And then, on the next sentence, it says, the lease will limit the number of cars, and I added, per apartment. After that. And I'm gonna go down further. On page four, second paragraph, when it says, when last before the board, one, two, three, four, fifth sentence down, where it says, it has been delineated and confirmed through conservation, it is all contained within the wetlands, it actually is all contained outside of the wetlands, because it's talking about the project. And, um, I would think, I don't know if you're reading that, Kathy, I thought the statement should say, it's all contained outside of the wetlands.
Yeah, I think that's what I meant to say.
Because usually, you don't put everything inside the wetlands. Okay, I just wanna see if there's, if you agree, Kathy, yeah. Okay, so that was page four. And then, I've left this up since the last meeting, so I haven't come back to look at it. I think that's it for me.
Okay, any other amendments? Okay, a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from April 20th as amended?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? An aye or a hand?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved as amended. We have one more set from May 4th. Does everyone have a chance to read the minutes from May 4th?
Yes.
Okay, any amendments to the May 4th minutes?
I might just scroll down.
Couple small ones again. Page four, first paragraph, that is lined up from the bottom, says, Mr. Flaherty explained, radiation is what's being emitted, it's actually generated.
Is that what he, you're saying he said?
Well, it's stated, she, it was printed as being admitted, but it was said, generated.
Where are you looking on this one?
Fourth, third line up from the bottom.
Oh, yes, 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 yep. Or emitted, probably, was what?
He actually said, generated.
Oh, okay, okay.
And that was just, that was it for me.
Okay, and Amy, did you have ones as well?
I did, and on page two, the first paragraph, um. They submitted supplemental information, including site plans. I guess I just wrote, who is they? EP didn't submit site plans. Oh, it just had to do with site plans. They submitted supplemental information, including site plans, stormwater reports, and traffic information. So, I guess, maybe just take out site plans, or maybe write, EP.
Where did you, where did you read this?
Page two, the very first paragraph.
Oh, yeah.
And it said, they, but I know they didn't submit the site plans, we had the site plans, they reviewed them. Maybe they reviewed supplemental information, including site plans, stormwater reports, and traffic information, because it was talking about the peer reviewers.
Oh, yeah.
And maybe instead of they, we can write, whoever they is, reviewed supplemental information.
Peer reviewer also, yeah, okay.
Peer reviewer, that, I mean, because they didn't submit it.
Right.
But they reviewed the site plans, stormwater reports, and traffic information.
Okay.
And, and then, I saw Millie's too, with the, generated. And, then, on page five of 13, two, three, four, five, the fifth line down, it says, 3:30 p.m., but I think it was 3:30 a.m.
Mm-hmm, yep. Where's that?
Um, one, two, three, four, fifth line down, on page four.
Page five.
Oh, page five. I don't know why mine says four.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, I clicked on it, changed to five. So, that was 3:30 a.m. on page five.
I don't, I don't think so, I think.
No.
It's supposed to, I think that's what it is. They said that their hours of construction usually start about 7:00 a.m.
Oh, okay, you're right.
And to be done about 3:30 p.m.
Yep.
Yeah, you're right, actually, I was thinking they were starting at 3:30 a.m.
Yep.
Sorry. And then, just the typo, on page eight, at the bottom, one, two, three, four, five lines up, on the very first word, I think that's supposed to be R, not here, and mine just says AE.
Yeah.
So, that's a typo. And then, maybe I just don't know this word, but I think I would've looked it up. One, two, in the second paragraph, same page, eight, the second paragraph, the last line, it says, the hours are fungible and to be discussed. Always on mine, I don't know what fungible means.
I think it's related to money or something. I think it's supposed to be flexible.
I think it's flexible.
Fungible is related to money, I thought.
It does sound believable, Millie.
I just, I just put a mark. So flexible, the hours are flexible and could be discussed.
Yeah.
And, that was all I have.
Okay, any other amendments? All right, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the May 4th minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so those are set, we don't have the minutes yet for 5:18. Kathy, I don't know, Chapter 61A, 121 Ball Street, is that something we need to cover tonight?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
So, that, I believe that I had sent that out by email to everyone. This is the process, a process that a landowner goes through if they're enrolled in what's called Chapter 61, 61A, or 61B, and, and it's a program through the assessors and through the state. And when they go to sell their property, the town receives notice of it and has the, what's called, the right of first refusal, to consider whether the town wants to purchase the property or not, and that's, it's just one of the functions of the program, that the town is notified when the property has a purchase and sale on it. So, this particular property is on Ball Street, and it's about four acres or so, there was a map that was attached, it was actually an A&R that was approved a few years ago. And, so, one of those parcels, it's 4.25 acres, is to be sold, and, but, and again, through this program, the town has to be notified first. So, the selectmen have to send out a notice to the planning board, the conservation commission, and the Board of Assessors, as far as whether or not they have any interest in purchasing the property. And then, the, there's a hundred, I believe it's 120 days timeframe that the town has to act within. So, the selectmen are looking to make a decision on this at their next meeting on June 28th. And so, so it's, so, you know, it's here for you to consider whether or not you, as a planning board, think that the town should purchase this 4.5 acres. It's surrounded by private property that is owned, the, the property is owned by Cynthia Fawcett, who is here tonight, and the, so, this, this particular property is surrounded by other property that Ms. Fawcett owns, and then, there's other, the other existing landowner, it's not all Davidian, correct? Davidian to the north.
Davidian to the north, that's under APR.
Mm-hmm.
Behind the lower edge of the property is the, well, I don't have her, Kathy.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
Behind the Davidian farm stand, then followed by the three houses, they're up the common driveway.
Right, three, yeah, three, you know, three private residential houses, so.
You sent this out?
I, I believe that I had sent it out. I have two copies of it here, just in my folder, if.
Is this the same property that Open Space looked at?
You probably did discuss it, I don't, I don't know if you, did you?
So, we did.
Okay.
Our last meeting, and we determined that it had no connections to any other open space.
Yep.
It was kind of on island, and the topography didn't look that appealing, at least for open space, and we decided to pass on it.
Right, it's very, it's very much a, this is just the map, if I can show you. And actually, I didn't, I didn't want to get so personal, Cynthia, but, I mean, everyone knows the house, the, with the.
The house.
Very cool roof.
Yeah.
On Ball Street.
Oh, yeah.
People familiar with that?
That's my house.
So, yeah, that's where Cynthia lives, and this is land just to the south of that.
Okay.
So, it's this particular, this is where Cynthia lives.
Yeah.
And this is all Davidians.
Okay.
And then, but behind this, if you came, if you came out here, you'd be on Church Street.
Yep.
Where the Davidian farm stand is, and then, these are all privately owned.
Okay.
So, that's, I forgot, you met last week?
Yeah.
Open Space met last week. And then, I have the purchase and sale, if anyone wants to look at it, and I, I thought I had mailed it out, so I do apologize.
That's okay.
But the, like I said, it's about four acres, a little over four acres. Purchase price is, you know, is listed in the, in the purchase and sale.
So, it's a lot, too.
Which is what the town would have to match, if the town felt.
Okay.
There was a reason to purchase this.
All right. So, wait, the decision, we would provide our, what our decision is, what our preference is?
Yeah, your input to the Board of Selectmen, and then, the Board of Selectmen, by how the state statute is, they, they then take a vote as to whether or not the town should, you know, enact their right of first refusal to purchase the property.
But we don't, we don't know what we're gonna use it for, at this point.
Um, no, I mean, you, you know, the, I mean, as Anthony said, you know, Open Space discussed it, and said, there's no value for, I mean, it would be for, right, it would be for open space purposes.
Oh, would be for.
That's what the chapter land is for, right? I'm sorry, that's, it's either protected farmland, so it's agricultural land, horticultural land, I forgot what the third one is, but.
Forest, was the.
Forest, there you go, forest, yeah.
This was up in forest classification.
Okay. And, so, so again, the town, you know, has to, through this program, make the determination of whether or not they want to purchase this property or not. And as Anthony pointed out, it's not, it's not anything that, you know, has been on anyone's list to purchase, you know, it's not next to existing state-owned land, it doesn't meet any of the open space criteria that we look at.
Are there different benefits or any benefits, or? No.
I mean, I suppose if the town was looking for a school site or something, I mean, you know, you know, you could purchase property that way, but, it's typically for open space purposes, when, when we're looking at this chapter land.
Okay, but it wouldn't necess, if we passed on it, it wouldn't necessarily stay open space?
No, it's, it's, someone is purchasing it to build a house.
Okay, okay.
Yes, yeah.
I understand, I see.
So, again, through, through the, through the state program, it's required that notices given to the, to the town, and then, the planning board, the assessors, and the conservation commission, and the Board of Selectmen are contacted as to whether or not they want to purchase it or not. So, so the selectmen's, you know, through the Town Administrator's Office, sent out a memo to staff, asking, you know, to check with the various boards.
Okay. Any board comments on this, or thoughts? Anthony, it sounds like you.
Yeah, I think we, the whole board, we looked at this, and we looked at it pretty closely from a map perspective, yes, and we just didn't see, I guess we felt that if we were going to be looking at open space, this wouldn't be a property that we'd be looking for, because it didn't attach, as Kathy said, to anything else, and if we were going to put money towards something, there were probably other more desirable properties we'd want to look at in the future.
Okay, any other comments or thoughts?
I'd agree with open space, they have limited funds. I agree with that.
Okay, Michelle as well?
I agree.
Okay, so it sounds like the planning board supports the recommendation of open space to not purchase, or not, you know, take advantage of the first right of.
Okay, so I can send an email to that effect, or maybe I'll just put in a quick memo.
Sure.
So that the selectmen have it for their file.
Sure, that sounds great, thank you.
Okay. And then, the only other thing I wanted to check on, Carrie, before you go on with the agenda, or whatever, or you're gonna go on, I just want to go back to the Design Review Committee, do you want to specifically put that on the next meeting?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Well, yes, because we actually have, so we have a couple things going on with Design Review, I'm glad you mentioned that. So, we have the reappointment going on, and then, we have this discussion going on, so, I guess July 6 is the only opportunity coming up, because we're not meeting on July 20th.
And July 6, we don't, and I know, I think there was one or two of you that, that, am I gonna do that only remote? And so, we don't, we don't know at this point whether we can have a virtual meeting or not, on the 6th, so.
Okay, so the other thing I wanted to ask tonight, too, so. So the other thing I wanted to ask tonight too, so segueing into this big, ju, bigger agenda item, is I saw in KP Law's memo that it sounds like the board of selectmen need to vote to allow for board members to participate remotely, assuming there's a quorum in person that, uh, members could participate remotely from wherever they are to call into a meeting, assuming we have that capability. But that the board of selectmen have put that vote forward.
Uh, uh, yeah, I believe that's, yep.
But then as a planning board, should we supplement in our own vote? Like, should the board of selectmen make that vote? Do we also, as a planning board, have, should we have something in place to say pending that decision? We would also like to allow, you know, we agree to allow remote participation, assuming a quorum of board members are available in person. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know that if you have to, uh, it's so up in the air.
I know, because I, one more is that we, we didn't take the vote tonight and then we get to July sixth.
Yeah, yeah.
And so the board of selectmen meet on the twenty-eighth.
It's not going to hurt, let's put it that way. It's not going to hurt to take that vote. I don't think it's required, but it's not going to hurt to, to, to say something like that.
Because then if we needed to have it, we have it. And if it makes no sense and we don't need it, then it's just, we made a vote to do something we can't do.
And then I didn't, just speaking of Ju, of Ju, July, I was gonna say June sixth, July sixth. I, and I thought, and, but I, I could be wrong, that, that, I, that one or two of you weren't going to be here?
Mm-hmm.
Or is, you're not here, Michelle?
I'm not here.
Oh, Michelle's not here.
On July sixth?
You may not even have a quorum in person.
Okay.
I could try to make it work. I could try. I, I would rather not be here.
Yeah.
Same for me.
But I could try to come back early.
So we'd have to be remote because we wouldn't make a quorum unless Amy and people, you know.
So do you, so given that information, do you want to look at?
Alphabets.
A different date in July so that, because Michelle, you're away, right? Amy and Anthony, you're potentially away. Do you want to look at like the week of the thirteenth? Cause I know the week of the twentieth is vacation day for a few of you, is vacation week for a few of you. So did you want to look at the thirteenth?
But do we have the room if we need the room?
Um, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll have a room. The, I mean, I.
I can make the sixth work.
You can make the sixth work?
I think that might be better, yeah. I don't know.
Right, but, but Michelle's out. I mean, you all can speak for yourself, but, I mean, I'm just looking at this.
So if I had a choice between the sixth and the thirteenth, you say, the sixth would be my preference? I mean, we have four, right? Did I hear?
Yeah, are you gone? You're, are you gone in July? Or you're, where, are you able to come in or call in on July?
On the sixth?
Yeah.
Um, I could come in if, if I needed to.
Okay, but the thirteenth, that's not an option for you?
Right.
Okay.
Unless I could call in.
Okay. Amy, is either one?
Same with me. I, I can make the sixth if we, if we can call in remotely and we wouldn't have a quorum. I can make the sixth. I could, I could come back.
Okay, and Michelle, can you call in the sixth if we have?
I can call in, I'm just not coming in.
Okay, so you're a call in, not come in. Millie, you don't care either way.
And by call in, you mean you're talking Zoom? Yeah, okay.
Wait, no, I meant if, if a quorum was in person and people could call in remotely, if we have that ability to do hybrid by the sixth.
Yeah, I.
You think unlikely?
Well, we, we, I know we don't have it now. I know they don't have the, I don't want to say it's the tech, I don't know if it's the technology or not. But I do know, just based on, you know, in-house conversations, we don't have the ability to do, to call in to a meeting right now.
Right.
Not that it's not legal, but we don't have the ability to do it.
So if, if it gets approved by the state and we can't do hybrid, we certainly can do all remote.
Yes, yes.
It's all, that's the only difference.
Oh, so then we could do all remote even on the sixth, so maybe, why don't we keep it?
If it gets approved, yeah.
It sounds like it is.
I know, it does sound like it is. I just don't want to say that.
I know. All right, okay.
All right, so we're looking at July sixth then, um, that it works virtually, as, right?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, the, hi Cynthia. Um, and then on the, so on the sixth, you'll have, we'll, we'll have to send a letter out um, to the designer review committee, uh, member. So you'll have that on the agenda and then you'll also have seventy-five Ridge Road, the informal discussion, that, um, person, the developer who wants to come in. And then you had also said ninety-one Brigham Street.
Yep. And then we'll do, um, design review interviews that night as well.
Yes, yeah.
In earthwork.
In earthwork.
I think we've seen something for ninety-one. Does seventy-five Bridge have any sort of?
Yes, he had sent out, the, what you had received was just, uh.
Oh, okay, we have that?
Yes, and I'll send it out again.
Okay.
Um, and I'll send Ridge Road out again. I mean, excuse me, um, um.
Brigham.
Uh, thank you, Brigham.
Yeah.
So that you've got both of those.
Okay.
Um, and then, um. Oh, and then, um. Um, my goal is to have a draft. I don't know if that's going to happen, Carrie, but all of a sudden it's like July. Um, but to have a draft of, uh, four twenty-five Whitney Street to look at.
Okay.
And we have enough time?
That's my goal.
If, if there's no draft, we have ninety days. From what was the date that we did the decision?
The eighteenth, May eighteenth.
May eighteenth?
Okay, so, um, but for the, um.
To August eighteenth?
So far, we have one application that came in for earthwork board.
Correct.
But for, for a design review, um, did, did Tom get a letter?
Yes, yep. So Tom Rann received his letter today.
Okay, is he interested or he didn't reply yet?
Yes, he's interested. Um, and then the notice went out, um, on the website.
Okay, okay. And does that go out via email as well or whatever?
Yes, yes, uh, yep, to the town, um, news subscribers. I think that's what they call it.
Okay, great. Okay. So yes, that's, that's for the agenda. Does that, is that everything you wanted to cover for that?
Yeah, I think, that's, without having any public hearings, I think that's, we've got a full decision al, I mean, a full discuss, uh, I'm looking at my notes, a full agenda already.
Okay. Um, one other thing I wanted to cover, so just in talking about our rules and regs, uh, this particular part, I actually don't know it would be a rule or reg or not, but if we wanted to take a quick vote that in the, in the event the board of selectmen approve remote participation of board members, um, that, that we allow that as a matter of our own.
Yeah, could we also write a memo to the board of selectmen asking, telling them, oh, we're all in favor and hoping they vote to approve remote participation? Like, would it help to get a memo from the planning board saying please do it?
Yeah, maybe if they, if we don't mind writing them, and I don't mind drafting it, just by if, by, on their, if they could consider it for their June twenty-eighth meeting, if they, I don't know if they plan to do that or not, but if they would consider for, in time for our July sixth meeting. If need be. I mean, really, it's only a case if we don't get approval for remote. Otherwise, is the, the board's preference, our only choice actually is to meet remotely that night.
Uh, for the sixth, yeah, that's what it sounds like, yeah?
So I guess it doesn't matter if it's by then anyway.
I could come back though. If we didn't get the remote.
If for some reason we'd figure it out.
Yeah.
But maybe I'll just send an email. I'll, I can send an email to your point, just to let them know we're coming up on July sixth. It would be great if we had that option to.
Yeah.
Be flexible.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, do we, do we want to take our own vote in case we need it to have approved that sort of arrangement?
Church somewhere.
Okay, so is there a motion then to, um, allow for, assuming the board of selectmen vote to allow for remote participation, that the planning board also, also authorizes remote participation of board members with a quorum of board members in person?
Well, I think, you know, I'll go remote, right?
No, no, that's not, that's, it's only if, if we allow, we have, we as a board have to allow. So the board, uh, my understanding from this memo is that the board of selectmen or, in the memo it said CEO, but it sounded like it was either mayor, mayor or the board of selectmen, give the town the overall authority, if it's not already in the charter, to, to enable remote participation by board members. And that would distribute, that would be allowed through all the rest of the boards. My concern is that it may be that each board then has to authorize it for its own board. And if we don't do that by the sixth, this is our last night together in a public setting to do that. We may not need that. It may be just a not needed point, but if it is for some reason needed, I'd hate to lose our opportunity. So that's, this is like a protection vote more than like a.
Yep.
Okay, so is there, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
It's hard to get used to raising, right?
I know. Okay. Um, the other thing we don't have to decide tonight, but, um, I wanted to bring up as a possible amendment to our rules and regs. One thing that we've been talking about for a while is, um, just getting materials within X period of time before we meet. I think in the past we said like, and this would be like for staff too, obviously, like, so that, you know, staff has notice, we have notice. If whoever, you know, whatever applicants are coming for the board, that they provide materials. I mean, we talked about forty-eight hours in advance, you know, business four, two business days, whatever the case. So I just wanted to bring that up as, um, is that, it sounds like it would belong in the rules and regs perhaps? Versus like a bylaw change?
Yep.
I don't know, any thoughts on that? I find it hard to get, it's like there are some days over the past couple of months where like you, the staff must have been going crazy.
I know, it's awful. I, I agree.
Like, this, you know.
Definitely having a parameter of certain amount of days before a meeting to have all information available makes sense.
Yeah, I'll check with a few towns too, that, to see if anyone's, you know, why.
Yeah, their language.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
To see if, if, uh, some of the bigger towns might have something like that.
All right, so we don't have to, any thoughts on what that, I mean, I was just, forty-eight hours stuck out to me, but I don't know if board members feel differently.
I don't know.
Be good to have it like before the weekend.
Yes.
Sometimes you need the whole weekend.
Yeah, cause I think then you know what you're preparing for.
Maybe it's either Thursday or Friday before.
Yeah, Friday, five PM the week before.
Yeah.
Like you're five, so it's like five days before it'd be Thursday or Friday.
Right.
Okay.
Cause some of the stuff needs way more than twenty-four hours.
Okay. All right, so I guess if we see anything that looks like a.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have, um, looking at these other items here, I think there's nothing else that I need to cover unless we need to cover anything else.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
I'm on master plan at the implementation, we haven't met yet and I'm just curious as to what we're planning.
It's, it's coming. We thought, we thought we were going to be doing it in, in June, Jean. Um, but we're, um, working on a small contract with the consultant that, that we used for the master plan to help us get up and going with the implementation committee. So, so as a matter of fact, I just talked to them today. Um, so now we're looking at a July meeting. And, um, and once I confirm that with them, then we'll send out, and I, it's, it's gonna, it may end up not being until August because we're going to get in everyone's vacation, but, but that's the, the goal, is we're shooting for a July meeting.
Okay. My concern is I was appointed for a two-year term and I'm afraid, you know.
They, no, and we'll, and we'll, we'll talk about that, or I'll talk about that with the town administrator because, I mean, it's really, you know, it should really be from when we, you know, start the, the process, so.
Good, thanks for asking that. Yeah, me too.
Jean, I'm sorry if you sat here for all.
I know, I keep to talk, calling Kathy.
Okay, all right, is there, thank you, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? And it's a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, move your turn. Thank you, everybody.
Maybe you start some works better. Yeah, it's only nine o'clock.